Give me a thumbs up. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Epping School Board meeting on Thursday, December fourth, twenty twenty five. We could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have public. We're gonna start with public comments. If anybody would like to speak. I think um we would like you to come sit and join us at one, yeah, this side of the table. Would like to speak, just state your name, where you're from, and if you work for the school, you can share that if you want. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
My name's Dave Glady. I'm from Lunedary, but I'm the library media specialist here at EMHS.
Awesome.
And I'm Suzanne Domkowski. I'm the library media specialist here at the elementary school and I live in Dover.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, please feel free to speak on why you're here.
Thank you. So um thanks very much for letting me speak. In the spirit of fostering robust community engagement, I'm here to ask the board to reconsider cutting the library media position shared between the EES and EMHS. The board provided some direction of not cutting in any positions, but this cut would directly impact students. This position is unique because it serves all students in both schools. The whole budget collaborative team has a very difficult job. We know that no one here wants to actually cut the position. It has been part of the budget since twenty twenty one, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. When it was split between EES and EMHS. So this speaks to the importance to our schools and community. So I understand that we're in a challenging budget year, which makes it important to look closely at the real impact of each position on the student learning and day-to-day operations. The perceived savings of cutting this position comes at a different cost to our K-12 through K through twelve students. It's about access to materials and access to the space. Without this position, the students will not have access to the full offerings of the catalog, classification system, to a person trained in our library management system, which is Atrium and OPEC, and to consistent library availability. File uh filled properly, this role ensures safe supervision, efficient operation, and uninterrupted access for students who rely on the library for reading support, research help, and a consistent place to learn. This position is not merely sitting on a circulation desk checking in and out books. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the board to restore this position so our district can continue to provide safe, consistent, and fiscally responsible library services for all students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can, if you want, does anybody have any questions, comments? I have none.
Thank you for speaking.
I'm speaking for the same thing.
Sure.
Should I just?
Yeah, come on over. Can I ask a question based on what you shared?
Sure.
This is, I just don't have this information, so I was not aware this was a shared position, like between the schools. Can you describe a little bit about what that looks like, like it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or it's half days?
Sure, so she works every other day, or this position works every other day.
Okay.
So typically it falls on A-days.
Okay.
For me.
Yep.
Um and then your schedule is a little different because it's a six-day schedule.
Yes, I have, yeah.
It's a six-day schedule.
Yeah. So on the days when this posi- this person who is retiring, but when she's not there, it's you are the sole person in the library and you are the sole person.
Correct.
Yes. Anybody else have questions?
So I guess, how, how are the students accessing everything on the days when she's not there? Now versus if she wasn't there all day, so what would be the, the difference?
Well, I'm at the desk more than I am able to like walk around, help a student look for a book. Or you know, when you have that student that says, oh, I don't really want a book today. And I always try to say like, what's your interest? What might you be interested in learning about? And then they might say skating and I'll say, I know where the skating books are and you know, I'm doing that, then I'm at the checkout. Then I could be over here watching something else a student may be doing, or the younger kids, you know, if somebody's uh needs to work out a situation or whatever. So um I make myself available in many spaces throughout a class period. So I feel like I, you know, being right behind the desk the whole time essentially takes me away from the students and meeting their needs.
Okay, so on, on the days when she's not available.
Yes.
You, you aren't able to, to get away from the desk to.
Yeah, you have to go back and forth, back and forth, and I'm, you know, down there looking for books. I could be over here. Depends on the day.
Okay. And similar situation at the middle high school?
Yeah, I, I would say that we're not servicing all students.
Okay.
Be- because it's part-time.
Because it's part-time.
Already, you're already not served out.
Okay, and then I guess just to, maybe for, for my education and maybe others. So I'm familiar with like the Dewey Decimal System, I'm looking up books and everything, you mentioned several, several others. Is there not a student access point where they can look stuff up to find out where it is in the media center?
There is and they've been trained.
Okay.
However, however.
Alright, so isn't, I guess if, if you could expound upon that a little bit more. So if a student's having issues, is it that they've forgotten how to access the system, or they forget the, the syntax? Is it, is there like a little hot sheet next to their portal that would kind of redirect on like, hey, if you've forgotten, here's how you look for media?
Yeah, so again, it's not just that checking in and out books. It's also servicing students who are looking for a book. It's servicing students where there I have a class. So I, what happens oftentimes is I'll be in the middle of a class and students will come down for, to check out a book, to
Okay.
Print something, to um have a poster printed, right, or a teacher comes down looking for materials and I'm not available for them.
Okay, alright, that gives me a little bit more understanding, thank you.
I have, I have another question. Um it's kind of awkward, a little uncomfortable, but it's one over here. Did the administrative team consult with you both that, that in asking for your input? In their, in as the budgeting process has been happening, did they re- reach out and get your input and did you, I'm assuming you shared the same thing?
So we were um initially part of the collaborative team in the sense that we were notified that it could be happening. Um but the final um call wasn't made, or I, I didn't receive that until um two weeks ago, so the previous school board meeting.
Okay, that was the first you learned that.
In a definite fashion, yes.
Other questions before, we have another g- public.
Um a follow-up, so the person sitting at the desk, it's really having desk coverage for book checkouts and reactive. If I'm understanding it correctly, so walk-up traffic um at that point to have another body.
In addition to processing books, in addition to um cataloging books, um in addition to keeping up with our atrium system, which is our library management system. So again, we all think of that person behind the desk as just waiting for someone to check out books, but it is more than that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else before?
Um so when our current library assistant is processing books, you know, that's very detailed. Depending on the vendors we order books from, some of the information isn't always available on the book. So I know recently we had an issue with one book company where it was harder to process the books. You probably know which one I'm talking about. And um so it's very detailed, like what um is being done and it is time-consuming. It's not something you just do in ten minutes.
Yeah.
Especially um you know, when you get that new book collection at the beginning of the school year. So um it is quite a, you know, process to get that done. And for somebody that is teaching, like Dave and I are, you know, that we are not available to do that. That would take like either, you know, sometimes I'll eat and do something during my lunch, but you know, I'd like to take a little, you know, break. Or you, some people probably are doing their, these things after school hours, so.
Yeah.
You know, her help is uh genuinely appreciated.
Yeah, it needed, sounds like.
Yeah. Hi, um Betsy McCombs, I live at twenty-three Church Street. Um and they reached out to me as a community member, as a parent of a student in the schools, and also as a librarian at another local New Hampshire school. So five years ago, I came before the board to speak about this position when it was considered for elimination uh in twenty twenty. And some of my reasons for keeping it are the same as they were then and similar to what they've said. Um but if I don't stay on script, I'll just wander all day. So I appreciate the reasons for the repetition. Um I would just like you to ask you, as you consider eliminating this position, that you carefully think about all those daily responsibilities that they've mentioned. Besides having someone always there when your students walk through the door or a staff member needs something. If you've worked in a school, you know that we're not really planning for next month or even next week. Sometimes it's, oh, we're doing that lesson now, we need those biographies, we need that thing right now. And when those students or that teacher reaches out, if we're not there when they reach out, you just wasted a resource you already invested in, because you gave us the library, you gave us the materials, you gave us the resources, but we can't get them there when the person asks. And what I've learned in twenty-five years of doing this is that if they ask once or twice and someone's not available, they stop asking. And then it falls to, you know, they're, they're just like, they're without all these resources that you've already invested in, so that's kind of a waste. Um having that person there can be the key to a successful library. Um our goal should be that every community, community member has the ability to receive resources, materials, support and assistance when they need it. If this position's eliminated, those services, that support, that assistance all goes away. And um they've shared with me some of the daily tasks this person did, which they've already mentioned. It's about six and a half hours worth of work every day. So where's that six and a half hours getting done? Because these two people work full-time. So there's six and a half hours worth of work that there's no one to do, and it can't just be a person at the desk. As was mentioned, this is like, especially with the cataloging and processing, that's highly trained. Um kind of information that you have to, yes, you could train somebody to do it, but they have to be, can't be who is available to fill in. And if these people are pulled for other things, like I know you are for duties and coverage, you're just creating these holes and these gaps. And then if you eliminate this position, you're creating a really big gap. Also, you're turning, you're losing a knowledge base of someone who knows both schools, both libraries and every single kid. That's a big amount of like institutional knowledge there of how both libraries work that we just be throwing away. When you invest in the school library, you're making a sizable investment in those students and that staff and all their learning objectives. The library is every classroom's classroom library. So if you're not gonna fully support it, you're, you're almost wasting what you have put in already. Um there's all those front-of-the-house jobs, working at the desk, but there's all the back-of-the-house jobs of processing books, mending books. We spent the money on books, but this one's a little damaged and can't go out till somebody mends it. She doesn't have time in her day to glue and tape and mend books, and it seems like such a small thing. But think of the return on investment for a position that's probably gonna make thirty thousand dollars or less. The return on investment for that is really pretty big. Um and then when you consider that relationship the person can build with a student that maybe goes all the way through our schools. You know, the first thing I did when I sat down was, she said, oh, how's, how's your son doing and how's this going? Because she knows him. And then Mary Ann, because she's worked in both schools, knows all these kids. Like there's something to be said for that too, for that position. And I'm really glad that they, instead of eliminating the position, they made it a little, a little more stretched, but also a little better by ass- assisting both school libraries. And I think that was a really great decision that I appreciate the board making. Um I just, I really want you to consider all of that, and I, I understand the budget constraints. Because I'm also your town library trustee, who's the treasurer. So it's been a hard year when you're going, do we really have to strip the Phillips? Like, do we? Because it's such a tight budget, but the return on investment on this, I really think it should get second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other, other public insight? Yeah, yeah, of course. Thank you for your time.
Yes.
Thank you for coming and speaking.
Feel free to come back up too. Yeah, think of something else.
Hi.
Hi.
Deborah Dyer, I am uh the digital learning specialist uh now for the entire district. Uh for the prior uh nine years for um EMHS, and this is my fifteenth year in the district. Um thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak to you uh this evening about this topic. Um it's definitely one that we're all passionate about. Um I, I want to reiterate the things that were said um by both Dave and Suzanne um about what they do, but I think that they were also not painting a complete picture, probably um, you know, to be modest or whatever, about how busy they are and the work that I see them do. Um and the collaboration that happens between the library assistant and the library media specialist in order to create experiences that draw teachers and students into the library space, um which I feel would be something that we would lose um if the position was eliminated. I appreciate again that the consideration um for this particular position was that we're not causing a person to lose their job because this person is retiring. However, we are choosing to eliminate a position and a resource for students and for teachers that is really valuable. And I would ask respectfully that the board reconsider that decision, particularly in light of the fact that the past two years prior to this year, other positions have been eliminated. So in twenty-four, twenty-five, the EES science teacher position was eliminated. Um for this school year, the digital learning specialist position at the elementary school was eliminated, which is why I am now for the entire district. Um and this was also proposed to be eliminated back in uh twenty twenty. And during the deliberative session uh at that time, it was fortunately, there was a motion made um by our former library media specialist for EMHS um that passed successfully in order to return it to the budget. And I just wanted to point out that at that time, um there was clear support and understanding for the value of that position and it hasn't changed. Um in fact, uh Principal Sousa, he wasn't at the time the EES principal, uh but is now uh talked about how the position is a big bang for our book. Um and it's a, a small amount to pay for such a valuable position to have. And I don't believe that that has changed uh in any way. So I hope that um you'll reconsider. I'm not sure, I wasn't able to, to find it. I think I may know where to look now for the proposed budget. Um I, I'm hoping that there maybe could be some, another look at some other things that could be eliminated. I don't know what new things have been added. I certainly know that there have been new positions that have been added in the past few years before that, before we continue to make a decision to cut another teacher or paraprofessional position um from our district. And also, uh the other, the other thing that I wanted to add was, uh I'm not sure how the Fremont students coming and the additional revenue we would get, which I believe is the per people cost somewhere around twenty-two thousand dollars that we would get for each of those students. That seems like just a few of those students coming into our district could very easily cover the cost of this position, um which as, as we know, is a paraprofessional, so it's a much lower um dollar amount than some others. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public who would like to speak? I, I have a couple of questions about this topic.
Okay.
Uh approximately, what is the savings?
Uh fifty-five thousand?
So fifty-five thousand.
With benefits and.
Yeah, yeah. How does this work? Now what?
Uh I mean, at this point, we haven't gotten to our budget meeting yet.
Sure.
So there could be other things that we look at that maybe you want to reconsider, what things you cut, but ultimately it's your decision, right?
It is, yeah.
You have been presented with areas in which we've seen savings in the budget.
Yeah.
Um we also, you've brought forward some stuff that you thought, so now it's gonna be when we get to our budget meeting. We can go back and forth and discuss, but tonight is technically the last board meeting for the budget. But that doesn't mean it can't be extended, right?
Yeah.
Next week, we go back to the budget committee with what we think is our best budget to present to the budget committee to create a warrant article. However, if there's still some things we need to look at, we could build in additional meetings.
So we're not necessarily gonna like re-vote on that.
You don't, you don't really vote on it today because we, you vote on the warrant.
Sure.
Um and the warrant is until next week, so. Uh and then even then, you still have wiggle room before we actually have to vote to put it on the ballot.
Yeah.
So there's time, but that's kind of the next step is that it's really in your hands. It's up to you as a board, if you wish to keep the position, cut the position.
I mean, just, well, and I just, just to put it out there, it, it, it came, it wasn't a board. Yes, it was a board, we agreed to it, but it was, it was recommended to us. So it wasn't as though we said.
You could look for more answers as to why the administration thought to cut this position, what was the reasoning behind it. I think the biggest reasoning behind it was that it was a physician that was retiring.
Mm-hmm.
Um so through natural nutrition, it was like able to be done. Do there, you could ask more questions to the administration as to what, you know, who would pick up those additional responsibilities, how that looks. I mean, talking about just through conversations I've had and been part of, um you know, having students come in and help as part of their learning, come in, and you know, we have some students that work in the tech department that help out. So could a student help out in the library and help with those needs? There's been other conversations of how to continue to support the library program without having to support a physician, but make students more involved in those. That's.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's helpful. I um, I would love to share my thoughts, but um I would love to hear what other board members, if, if they wanna share their, what they're thinking about this, if you're comfortable.
Think, just because of the process of this, is that we've heard the public, but then I think behold those
Okay.
Discussions for the budget part, so we can move on to the other topics. And then because we haven't actually had the budget presentation, I think that belongs to that conversation.
Yeah.
As we've, you know, we've gone through budget process and it is a complex process. And it's hard when you are tasked with making decisions and cuts to realize what a full impact would be, right? And we, we all sit from a limited perspective, some of us more limited than others. We're not in the schools every day. Um so I think it could be worth continuing some discussions with the admin team. Um I, I don't know if anything, you know, has, anything new has kind of come up for anybody on the admin team after hearing some other perspectives. I don't know. But I think it's worth discussing. I just don't, like you said, I don't know that it's the thing to do right now.
And I think there was a committee that was created to talk about these type of cuts and so, and I know a member or two members.
Robin and I are part of those groups.
So that your own board members can have direct those conversations and how those were talked about as a group.
Yeah.
Um but I don't know if it's during this part.
Yeah, that makes sense. And I mean, I, I'll, I'll hold my, most of my comments, but you know, fifty-five thousand dollars is not a lot of money. And in what I'm hearing, just based on what we've heard so far, is that there is a direct impact to kids and I think everybody knows where I stand on that, so. That's not a lot of money in our, in our overall budget. And you know, I had pointed out last at the last meeting, I mean, our bookmobile is, we're budgeting seven thousand dollars for that, so that's one eighth, you know, so uh, you know, I always, I always like to, I think like anybody, I always like to look at what other things we can do. Um especially when it, it does directly impact kids, so. But I do think it's um more of a budget meeting discussion and so. But we have public.
I just, uh, do I have to announce myself?
No.
I just, I, I had a quick response to something that was mentioned about utilizing students for assistance. And students are awesome for, I have some at my school, they help shelf books. They make sure all the computers that people use to use the online catalog are up and running. And um never unfamiliar with the collection if someone's looking for something. But one of the places that I, I restrain from having students is something like book circulation. Because within those systems is a lot of personally identifying information
Mm-hmm.
From both home information to your library checkouts. And that's something that there are some house bills on the floor right now that are, are sending bills that are discussing. But the fact that that is considered personal, private information currently is something that we all have to be really aware of, which is why our computers lock when we're away from them for more than X minutes and things like that. So it's just something, when you think about utilizing students, students can be wonderfully empowered and very helpful and be wonderful role models in the library, but there are certain things that one of the certified staff members really should have, have a, you know, last saying.
Yeah. Other public comments about this topic or any other topic? Yeah, come on up.
Um I just wanted to add one, one point that I didn't share prior, um that I think is really important. Uh is the impact that these continuous cuts to teacher inherent positions have on the morale and the culture and climate within our schools. Um I know I've, I've talked to teachers many a times about these topics and um I, I just want that to be something that's considered. I really, really appreciate uh your question about how um the library media specialists were involved um in the conversation before the decision is made. Um and I, and I would love um to have the opportunity for other teachers and other um paraprofessionals to have the opportunity to provide some feedback on, on how those things impact their day-to-day. Because obviously, if you remove that position, if that decision stands, then now all of that additional workload gets put on your two library media specialists. Um and that's a really difficult position to be in, and not to say that either of them are thinking in this way. But those are things that factor into whether or not a person can choose to remain in a position that they have um or, or look elsewhere. And we've had a lot of turnover among um teachers over the past several years. And I think um this is one of those areas that has an impact on that. So I just wanted to add to the discussion and to the thoughts. Thank you.
I would just add that we, please pass this on, we love teacher input, so please come, because your voice matters, so. Other public comments before we move into our scheduled topics? Alright. First scheduled topic, uh seventh grade field trip proposal, Danielle Herman.
Hey, thanks for having me here tonight.
I was gonna say, are you gonna, can you present that? Did you bring your laptop?
I did, but I wasn't able to connect last year.
That's okay.
At the town hall.
I, I have the presentation, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh so my name is Danielle Herman. I'm the seventh grade science teacher. Um and I'm here because I wanted to talk to you guys about a field trip that is ongoing um in a tradition for seventh grade students, and it's a overnight field trip at Outdoor Classroom. Previously known as Nature's Classroom, but they've rebranded it to Outdoor Classroom. So I put together a presentation with um some photos of students who participated this year. And I was hoping to get some students to come in and talk a little bit about their experience as well. Um but a couple of them were sick today. And then we got a snow day, so I don't have.
We could have brought, we could have brought our three.
Um so thank you um for allowing me to speak this evening on this topic. And I'm really excited to be here tonight, especially because I want to be able to thank you guys for funding the buses and the transportation this year. Um that helps to keep the cost of families down. Um so uh in your folder, there's the completed proposal and it includes the date as well as the proposed cost. I'm gonna go that, through that with you now as well. We're uh really proud to continue as a seventh grade team to want to offer this opportunity to students where we go away for three nights with them um in four days and provide them with this opportunity to participate in outdoor experience overnight. Uh so, thank you Christine. So this gives you kind of that summary up here, and this is the kids on like Osiphe with the mountains in the background. Um at, at being is the center of the universe, but some of our kids don't get to leave that center. And so it's really awesome to be able to take them to this like fringe of the White Mountains. And there are some of our students who have never seen a mountain until that bus trip, and it's pretty cool. Um so we are able to go and experience this beautiful thing with this residential program. And it provides students and teachers with a chance to experience education outside of the classroom walls. Um it's standard-aligned, um day and evening academic experiences as well as scientific inquiry and critical thinking. So up here, Christine has uploaded some information about how to pay. So I'm just gonna go back and forth as she switches the slides and then I'll talk through some of these too. Um Christine helped to organize a payment this year with credit card, which uh really allowed some families to be able to um pay now and then pay more later. Um so that was really helpful for check or cash. And this presentation is designed to show families probably this year in April so that they can start planning ahead to pay for the fall and budget out for that time. So that's what this slide is for. The proposed dates for next year are September twenty-eighth to October first. Um and we are hoping, hold on. We were hoping uh to continue to have this board to pay for transportation. Uh and the reason for that is the cost of the, the fee for students to attend has increased. Um but with your continued support of paying the transportation, we should be able to keep the cost to students at the same level. Um it will mean that we have less wiggle room to kind of support students who may need extra materials or things like that. Um but we will be able to continue to keep the cost at four hundred dollars per student. Checking here if I've got everything in there. Yes, so um we look over here, I wanted to just show you guys the dining hall where we eat. Uh and the smiles on some of the student faces is pretty exciting. Uh and the smiles on some of the student faces is pretty exciting there. Um but there's also the giant moose on the fireplace, I don't know if you can see that. Uh it's a really fun place to be able to go and introduce kids to this kind of outdoorsy feeling. And you end up eating with the field group, so it's a great opportunity for students to meet recently graduated from college uh young adults and to kind of open their minds to some of the like first types of positions that people can hold, as well as to talk to people about um a vision for education, like those conversations that kids have is it's pretty cool to hear that. Like talking about where did you go to school, how did you end up here, you used to live in Washington, but you're living in New Hampshire now, or like meeting somebody who is gonna see snow for the first time this year because they're deciding to stay in New Hampshire and they grew up and lived in Texas their whole life. So it's a really cool way for students to meet other young adults who can kind of like mentor them and help them connect with the outside. Mr. D usually travels with us, he's our guidance counselor, so it's a chance for him to meet up with students uh and to kind of get to know all of the students on a different level, so it's easier for him to make connections with them here at the school. We get to do things like roast marshmallows together, um PTA has helped out with that in the past. Uh we uh work in the field group, so again, that's that kind of intimate connection with a staff member at Nature's Classroom. But it also allows us teachers to be a student and to connect with the students on a different level. So we get to try out some of those types of things together, so like we get to go on the hikes, we get to learn how to use a little knife or to try to learn how to drive, uh to tie a new knot. And for kids to see us be that kind of vulnerable and learn new things is just a really great way to start the year and to have the kids get to know who we are. Um and to be willing to take risks with us uh in the classroom and then out of the classroom as well. There's little ropes course kind of stuff, which is really fun, so this is an example of one of the field group activities. Uh the dorms are excellent, I really gotta say, it's a really well kept camp. It's a lovely location being um at Camp Cody. I just I can't speak highly enough to that, we've been to other outdoor classroom locations and this one is very well maintained, the grounds are beautiful. Um and I think one of the biggest bonuses, they do have that on-site nurse that's there, um they're available twenty-four hours a day. These are the dorms we stayed in this year or the cabins we stayed in and our cabin groups, it's fun to see the kids just being silly with us, even funny faces. The cabins have the bunk beds, the common bathroom. Um it's a really cool thing to see the kids come together and plan, like how are we all gonna make sure that we've got showers, like they set up their own shower list. Uh and then they coordinate activities with each other, it's they play cards, they do that kind of thing. Um there's often storytelling in the evening, like ghost stories, so that's another fun thing to do. This is more beautiful scenery, more group games and more hiking opportunities. And this is the top of the mountain, we hiked to the top of Mount Mary this year. So just really fun to see them at the top and to see the kids smiling and being together, just hanging out. Uh this is a science evening as well as a bridge building experience, so the kids get to have choice in the classes that they take. So they can choose to do like dissections, um engineering tasks. Uh you're gonna see some pictures in the next slide that actually show kids like out on the lake in a canoe that they had to figure out how to tie together, so support a support a staff member in a chair between the two canoes without a staff member falling in, brave soul. And then I mentioned like whittling, this is the geodome that we built. Fun time furniture in the trees. The evening finishes with quiet singing, um and that for me is always just such a tender moment to see these seventh grade kids um singing their hearts out. And then like bringing their energy level down so that they can get back to their cabin and relax for the evening. And that concludes those slides that I had to share with you guys. Um do you have any questions at this point?
Um I think the only question I've got uh goes back to something you mentioned earlier about recovery costs for students who might need some other some other items, I'm presuming that's more along the lines of somebody forgot some toilet freezers or something like that, is that kind of those expenses? Would it be possible uh perhaps to have like a secondary checkbox on the registration form? Would you be willing to to donate a few dollars, maybe ten dollars towards anyone who might lose something on the on the way to camp or anything like that and kind of crowdsourced that a little bit potentially to help out?
Um I think that that's a really great idea and there have been several families that uh generously offered that without us prompting. I know that we did have um some funds from the calendar fundraiser that families turned back to like the group fund and we were able to offer to partial scholarships this year for students whose families were um not able to afford to have the students attend, but with the help that partial scholarship could. So formalizing it by putting it on the permission slip uh would be a great next step for that suggestion.
Sure. What's the percentage of students that attend?
I don't have the math on that for you. Um generally, I would say it's around eighty percent. So this year, we've got a class of eighty students. And math on that, I think we had like seventeen, fourteen.
Twelve or fourteen. It may not be that, it may not be that high. But those who stay, if I chat them in, we always, if this is a class trip or takes place of, there there's opportunity, nobody would be on the outside. You know, if 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 a student wanted to go with a family, aside from what you all explored, we always would make that happen. Uh some who stay behind, just like in DC, stay behind for preferences. Uh or perhaps eligibility around age and whatnot, but nobody would get the outside look in if it was a intent to be a class-wide trip and I think Danielle specifically, but the whole school's done a really nice job of making sure that, so.
I know you you said, you know, thank you to the school board for, you know, for the transportation, but I think that's an obligation of the school district because it's a field trip for a whole grade. So while it's it feels like a gift from us, it's really, it's what is what should happen. I hope it continues, but I will support that because we're sending seventy-two kids or however many on a field trip that we hope, we want every kid to go, so why why would the school not pay for it? It should just be built into our transportation line. What if we're a field trip, it doesn't come from special transportation, but but you're welcome.
Did remain.
Good, so there this it's already it's already there.
We all feel the same way.
Yeah, and thank you very much, I think the um the the kind of like the update on that is that last year was the first year that um it was proposed and it wasn't part of the budget last year, it was something that we found funny through donations that were made kind of unexpected, like gifts from local businesses. Uh so that was a huge gift to be able to do that, and again, without that contribution uh we would not have been able to then have that money left over to be able to support and offer small scholarships or to have the funds to be able to pick up the toothbrushes in the socks that were lost. Or the kid whose like pillow got stomped on on the bus and they were devastated, I can't sleep with the footprint. So like those are lovely things that we can definitely, we have that extra funding to be able to do.
Sure.
I um and you know, it might be some things that we send out to like the middle high school, like through our parents' square, like wanna make a contribution, like just a separate announcement, like wanna make a contribution to the seventh or eighth grade trip. Maybe a maybe a sixth grade family or a ninth grade family, because I know it was a really valuable experience for my my older son didn't get to go because of COVID and that was a bummer. But Colby, who just went, had an awesome time and it's a once in a lifetime kind of thing, so. I think our kids, and not every school goes, so I think our kids are lucky that we offer this, that we have teachers willing to go away with all these middle school kids for three or three nights and so I think it's awesome.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Like I I look forward to it, it is definitely a foundation for some of the relationships that we have with students for the whole school year.
Yeah.
It's a huge difference, we'll just start off with this.
Other questions, comments before we, I know we we do need to vote on this? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the seventh grade twenty twenty-six field trip to Outdoor Classroom?
So moved.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Matt, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes four zero. Yay.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation.
All right, so our next scheduled topic is the three oh six minimum school standard update, and those are.
We're gonna uh give Lauren a minute to catch up, she's pulling double duty tonight, Lauren's also serving events at the school basketball team, so she's came in from a, we'll say a competitive game.
It was good, they did they proved a lot.
Well, you owe four bucks, and your permit is there.
I think so, yeah. Um so just here to talk to you tonight about the updates to some uh policy that's been made. So they're commonly commonly referred to as the ed three oh sixes, so this is the minimum standard for uh requirements for an education. So what was handed out to you and is in your packet is a wonderful kind of cheat sheet that's been given to us. There's a great thing called a toolkit that's been created by other educators who have really led this charge over the last few years. And they've provided us with some tools to be able to really explain it pretty easily, sort of what the change is like. So uh in the table you have, you'll see that the first column is what is currently in place. And in the second column is what needs to happen, starting with the class of uh next year's.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-six, twenty-seven, sorry.
So we're current A graders.
Yes. Um so some of it is just, they've divided some things out and the numbers haven't really changed too much. So if you actually scroll down to the bottom of the second page, you'll see that the total credits for the minimum diploma are still twenty. Just what makes up that twenty is what the state the state has changed a little bit. Um so the arts education stays the same, digital literacy stays the same. The English uh is still four credits, um except it's three and a half and then you also have to include half specifically in writing. So one of the biggest changes with these ed three oh six changes is really looking at competencies. And the state's now looking really to say, okay, what competencies do students have to show that they master or get in percussion at? And then at the local level, we sort of just decide what that looks like. So um again, the for math, it's three, there's still a requirement that you have a fourth year math experience, so that's not changing. So kids would still have four years of English and of math. Physical science and biology stay the same. US and New Hampshire history is technically still one, you see in the second column, they've just broken it out to half a credit and half a credit. Then the US and New Hampshire government slash civics in that row instead it's been removed, if you go down three rows, it comes back together, they just push it um into one. There's logic and rhetoric, which again is that other half a credit that is part of the English, so really, English stays four credits. They've just broken out competency of logic and rhetoric. Civics is still half a credit. Economics, including personal finance, again, you'll see that if on the first column it's point five and the second one it says that there's none. Go the next two rows, they've just broken it up. The world history, global studies or geography, they have increased that. The health education, again, they just changed the name of it, so they've now call it health and wellness education. The physical education stays at one credit and then open electives, they have dropped that down to four. So the biggest change too, and I think on the last page, there is a kind of minimum standards, guys, big takeaways um to kind of summarize what the changes are, some of these get very in-depth. So the biggest thing is that they changed from seat time, or what's called Carnegie units, to now this competency base, which working with a lot of my colleagues around Southern New Hampshire and in the state, we're actually really far ahead of everyone else. So this for us is not a big lift, thankfully, because a lot of work that's already been done for us to be such a competency-based district. So I thank you all for that, because this has made this this fall a little easier. So it's really based about, it's not based on seat time. So one of the big things too is that credit conversation is not so much that half a credit means half a semester or one credit means a full year. The way they're now looking at it is based on the competency and we define at the local level what that competency looks like. There now, they still put a number to it, but it's the number doesn't equal seat time. That's the biggest shift that this makes and is usually the hardest part for people to kind of wrap their wrap their minds around. We have talked with the social studies department, which will be the has the biggest impact. So we've already talked with them multiple times in terms of where can we include some of these competencies? Are we already including them? How much of a change is this gonna be for our scope and sequence of our curriculum? And thankfully, one of the biggest things is that for us, we already have uh our freshman English class as one credit, so thankfully, we are ahead of the game with that one. We've talked about the the civics component, the personal finance, so we've involved in all of these conversations. So the goal for tonight was really to just give you folks an overview. There is a policy component to this that is starting next week, we've been working on it, so we go to policy committee next week to make those changes. Ahead of time, the program of studies coming in January, because they're all tied together. So this was just sort of initial overview, um as as I'm sure you've probably heard some of talk around it, so. I've been living this for probably about two and a half, three years now, so I don't know if I just simplified it too much, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to to answer them, but that's really for us, it's it's not a huge lift, we're in a really good spot, so.
Are we gonna have enough social studies people based on the new requirements starting next year?
Yes, okay. Yeah, yeah, we've already been able to work out with the scope and sequence where we can add these competency pieces. The teachers have done a great job in terms of some they already cover um and some they're able to get resources around the New Hampshire history one that's being broken out. The state has already been working with the historical society, they were all excited, so now they're trying to put together curriculum resources and professional development for teachers to help support them in that area. Uh working with our freshman socialist teacher, they feel pretty confident that they can they can work this stuff in, so.
And I just wanna make sure that I'm I'm understanding this correctly, so that there is no expectation that this is gonna have impacts for other classes and the cohort that's gonna start with and follow is next year's freshman class all the way.
Yeah, the graduating class of twenty thirty.
And every class after.
Right, okay, so any changes that we might need to make to our like our portion of graduate and all that can follow right along with that and not have any impact on anybody who's already enrolled in the high school side of things, okay, perfect.
And we're simultaneously working on it too, so that if we do have transfer students, say that they show up sophomore year, junior year and we say that some of these competencies are met in the freshman class, how are we gonna be able to provide that for them? So those conversations are already happening to make sure we have comprehensive programs set up, so that if students transfer in, transfer out, that we are able to do so, and this will have some transcript impacts too in terms of, again, if a student comes to Epping or leaves from Epping, a lot of the schools around the state are all communication with each other, there's constant meetings between guidance counselors and curriculum folks in terms of what transcripts will look like, so things are very clearly articulated in terms of what courses met different competencies such as like the logic and rhetoric, which class would that go in? And then the biggest part too is that the program of studies will be the main component. The program of studies is what we were told that the state will look at to really see where we are checking these boxes. So that's where we'll have the most detailed information in terms of which courses cover anything, so again, if a student was to leave Epping and transfer, or again, come in and out, the two schools could talk to each other and kind of see where they've met the different competencies.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So for example, logic and rhetoric could be happening in an English class? Which makes sense. Would you potentially that year-long English class might be worth one and a half credits?
So.
That's what I'm kind of hearing, but I'm am I not hearing that right?
It could.
Okay.
One. It's possible, some schools are doing it that way.
Okay.
Some schools aren't, um so it is a possibility.
Okay.
I think that that's not one that we're necessarily gonna go with. But again, that's more of uh when we get to policy next week, we'll be able to sort of see what the different ideas are around the credit pieces. That's a tough one, because folks don't think, well, if it's one and a half, it needs to be a year and a half course, but again, that's that's the mindset that takes the biggest shift around the whole thing.
Yep, right, right, yeah, that I I'm having a hard time.
Yeah, it takes a while.
It's almost a little too subjective, in my opinion, when it comes to that, you could go either way and argue it on both sides of whether something should be, in this case, a credit or a credit and a half. Whereas definitively, if it's a half a credit, half a year, right, or something of that nature, so there has to be some really tight guidelines on where things fall and how do they fall, so there's consistency.
Yeah, so we've had the conversation in terms of with the English department, which course are we gonna use to say this is the one that if they've passed this course and passed X competency, that this will cover that logic and rhetoric piece. Um there's a piece in there also for under.
But how does, sorry to interrupt, but how does that work? Because that logic and it has to be a half a credit. So if they're getting a full year of credit for English, or they're not, they're getting a half for English, tenth grade English and a half for logic and rhetoric. I don't see where it's all, I I'm sure there's more presentations that come, but I'm just as a as a as a parent. Yeah, I think it's as as an educator, I'm I'm not having a hard time following, I'm just having a hard time seeing it, so.
Yeah, and some courses could will change, some courses that are year-long may end up being two credits, especially in history. Yeah, and some courses could, will change, some courses that are year-long may end up being two credits, especially in history to cover everything. Some could be a year-long class, but be a credit and a half now.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, those are definitely, when we have the different versions that we have for you.
Yeah. Sure, sure, yeah.
I had the same sort of kind of takeaway as a parent too, both as a parent and a principal. And I really had to continue to remind myself that the shift is more about credit attainment per mastery of competency versus amount of time spent in the course. Uh, and so making that kind of make sense to everybody is, I think that'd be the magic, because I I sort of went through the same paces.
Right.
Yeah, and so a lot of if, some ways I explained is if you take everything on the left, so under the required subjects, and it's sort of a checklist, and if we didn't have any numbers next to it, and it's just what do you have to do to earn or pass that competency, and kind of like as a checklist?
Yeah.
And then there's, you can kind of uncover at the end, oh, well, you checked all these boxes, and then there's the math component last, is sort of the way I think of it.
Yeah, that makes sense, but then you are attaching, because we are a credit-based diploma system, so then it it would be great if there weren't any credits, and we have one, you could just say you need to do, you need exposure to all of these things, and then you earn your diploma, and then some.
Yep.
And it's, I think it's a little more confusing when you say, well, now you need, you know, financial literacy, some of that could be happening in econ.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, or personal finance, or or another class, consider math, or whatever, but anyway.
Yeah, yeah, and that's where it's.
That's, I get.
It's sort of almost like a weight versus a seat time type piece to it. So you know, the state sort of says, well, for this one to have one credit, we're weighting that more, not value, it's not the right term, but I assume saying, more than half a credit.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, it it takes a while to sort of wrap, wrap your brain around it, but um, these are just some of the, these are the major uh changes that have come our way, so.
Thank you for sharing, and other questions?
Uh, well, I guess, I thought in a question kind of wrapped together on, and Julie's not with us tonight, but I guess I'd be curious if there might be some way to kind of bolster up the program of studies a little bit, and maybe some of the sample um, um layouts on what makes up uh a course load per year. So that someone could take a look at that, and then as they're looking through the program of studies, like, all right, which of these classes really tick the boxes for some of these new requirements? So they can see what those options are, uh, instead of just looking through them like, all right, top of credits, half an English credit, or a credit here. Just for maybe a little bit more context when they're going through the program of studies, if we aren't doing that, or we actually.
So on that, on that piece, uh, that's exactly the process, and so the first piece is sort of digesting, making everyone aware of what the, what we we have to now look for, right, the three oh sixes. Then we have to go to policy, because the policy drives what we're able to do in that program of studies, and then a side-by-side comparison of the former and the proposed would be a part of that sort of next piece to kind of articulate the differences, the changes, where this piece fits in that piece, and what it used to look like and what it would look like now, so.
Okay.
We're probably, well, this is step one, so that's probably gonna be step three.
Okay.
You'll see this a lot in the next.
Oh, sure, and and I'm sure some of what I just asked for is gonna be uh positioned in that policy when it comes to us as well, but in case it hadn't come up, like, that that seems like it would be really helpful for the, for the students and probably the parents even more so.
Yep.
But it's helpful for us too.
Yeah.
For all of us.
It it seems like we're, the program of studies is a good overview, but it seems like we're gonna have to dig into competency and course maps more, to make sure that's aligning.
Yep, so one of our goals, school goals this year actually is to do all of our curriculum documents and our frameworks. And those are, it's kind of nice that these are happening at the same, same time essentially, so that social studies can, again, I say them because they have the biggest impact or biggest hit. Uh, be able to write those, knowing that these changes are starting for next year, so um, our curriculum documents that are being worked on are gonna end up being linked in the program of studies as well, so that it's able to be seen exactly what competencies are hit uh in which courses and things, so yeah, a lot of information goes in that's already in the program of studies, we'll say, and we're gonna have to add a few more layers of it, the details, so that again the su- the state, if they hold accountable, will be doing it either that way, but then also school to school, we can see, so. And there's been, like I said, a lot of collaboration amongst areas, schools, curriculum folks, guidance counselors, the mix, uh, we've all been going through the blend together, so.
It's it's nice timing-wise too, because one of our, a major sort of areas of focus from the NEAS accreditation between the the first, the initial visit and the decennial, was that framework work, so it would have been really unfortunate if we had done a year's worth of work and then had the three oh sixes come down, so luckily, we avoided that, and so the work is not gonna be, have to be duplicated for teachers, which is important. Um, so that, that worked out in our favor.
Good.
Our program of studies is gonna be large, because we have uh three grades that have three different diplomas. And then we have another grade, I imagine there's gonna be three different diploma options.
Impacts it, yeah, each diploma option.
Yeah, yes, we will.
It'll be longer.
Julie can speak for herself certainly, because she's obviously really good at this, but I think this was the year before the changes in three oh six, when we said, wow, this is gonna be the first program of studies that goes back to having.
No, that would be the ultimate layers, I know.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you very much, anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. The next thing, Christine, I think is you, finalize budget committee meeting on December, December ten, twenty twenty five.
Yes, so, um, back to our budget discussion, so at our last budget meeting, we had talked about some adjustments, Julie, I think, brought forward some great conversations around areas in the budget in which perhaps we could take a look at and see um the impact to those things, so uh you have a packet in front of you that just kind of talks about those areas, like I've summarized it into the different departments that you brought up. Um, and we are fortunate to have Mr. Mizony here with us, that um if you have additional questions around them, he is here to help explain some of those where most of them were driven from the middle high school. But I'm just gonna go through them real quickly, and then if you have additional questions, please let me know afterwards. So one of the areas that was talked about was the baritone saxophone. Um, this was a ten thousand dollar cost to get a new baritone saxophone. Um, the one that we currently have, yes, we have sent out for repairs, I know that was a discussion, you saw it in the manifest, that we're still sending this out for repairs, do we really need a new one? Um, but it has reached its end of useful life at this point. Um, the original instrument was purchased from nineteen seventy, from what I can tell here. Um, so it is a old baritone sax, um, so we are just looking to replace that, of course, we can keep continuously sending this out for repairs, but at this point it would be nice to be able to purchase a new one. Um, the other area, and again, Chris, if you want to jump in, just, just cut me out and add on into it. Um, workbooks was another area for special ed, I don't know why you put that in the music department, but workbooks for special ed was another area. It had, did increase by five hundred, however, it was just a shift in lines. So that particular line did increase, but another line within the budget, which was the um five, six, four, zero decrease, so why you saw that shift was just really a shift in those particular lines. Um, as well as equipment replacement in special ed, again, that was just a shift in lines, there was no additional cost put there. It was just moving money, so basically, there used to be like new equipment and replacement equipment, there's no new equipment being purchased, so they put that all into replacement because anything that'd be purchased would be a replacement, not a new, so that was just moving it to its appropriate spot within the budget, um.
I guess I would ask, um, I was kind of looking for that, no more specifics. What, what are we replacing? And you don't have to answer that, I'm just, because these are, most of these are mine, so.
I think if we looked in the notes to the budget, there might be more notes in there.
I don't think so, that's why I asked, that's why I asked. Usually, most of them were the ones that, there weren't, there weren't, there wasn't enough clarification in my mind.
As to what was being purchased.
To, to what was being, there were a few things that were a little more vague, so, um.
Um.
Move from, new, new.
The next one was the integrated studies, um, in the STEAM position, so there was talk at the board retreat over the summer about keeping parts of the STEAM programs still in our studies. Um, currently, it's a STEAM slash math interventionist type position that's there, but there are parts of that STEAM position like in the equipment and things like that, that are still being actively used, and want to continue to move forward in order to still have a STEAM program within that math interventionist.
So I, 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 I don't think we, I, I know that we talked about the math interventions doing enrichment, but we're not calling it STEAM. Unless there's, is there a STEAM class? Yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
So when um, when we had our discussion after the retreat, uh, and we had proposed the idea, you know, it's been difficult to find.
Yeah, 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 I support that, for sure.
But also, the part of the discussion was to make sure that we uh paid homage or honored the fact that we still didn't uh position that was intended to be in the unified arts for middle school. So we've, right now, been able to accomplish both, so so there are still, there's still one section of STEAM, and and probably room if we depending on how the master schedule splits up, one to two, which would remain in that UA rotation for middle school, which also is exciting uh as we talked about tweaks to the middle school schedule, so that's gonna be necessary, so um the position is not totally gone, it's in sixth grade now.
So sixth, so we have, sixth graders, one of their UA rotations is STEAM.
Yes.
Because that wasn't made clear, like, so, which is fine, but again, that's why I'm asking these questions, because we
Yes, that's a great question.
I sit at every meeting, and so we talk about a math interventionist, we talked about enrichment. That's great, you know, but it never, it never circled back that actually we're still running STEAM. Not that we need to know everything, but, so that's why I ask, why are we funding STEAM?
That's a great question.
If we don't have STEAM, but we do have STEAM, we have a couple sections.
That's a great question, and from that meeting, I, like, we took the, the will of the conversation, I mean, it happened, so it's, it's a valid and fair question.
Yes. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, that line is lower than it was when that position was all STEAM.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Significantly over the last couple of years, so, but we wanted to make sure that we, we, we were able to cover the check that we go over, and we said we need to maintain sort of uh foot in both lines.
So all sixth graders get STEAM, is that?
Yes, I, unless there, unless there's some oddity with uh the UA rotation, whether it's, there's a different schedule thing or whatnot.
What about integrated studies?
So integrated studies is the line, and that one is a, a shorter line, that actually is an area where we can uh use to um purchase things for win groups. Um, I know, I don't know, I'll use Ms. Moore's uh wellness, sometimes integrated studies there for things like smoothie day, or some of those um other you know, special events that happen, so it's really, again, it really integrates sort of all the pieces, and that's why that line is, it's important, but it's also, we're trying to keep it pretty responsible.
And I'm not disagreeing that those aren't valuable, important things, but it doesn't represent a budget line item, so when somebody looks, when a town the public looks and says integrated studies, they don't really know that they're funding win. And that's, I think, where I would like to see a little more clarification, I'm not saying that those things aren't needed, and that I know teachers are spending their own money, but is that the right place for that? Then maybe that need, that money goes down to zero, but some, that goes actually into a line that really represents win. Where does, if we need to do win projects, where is that funded? And I don't, because integrated studies was, was a class, that was our E M T STEAM, integrated studies, right?
That.
It was, that's where.
It's one of the things that was useful, that that integrated studies line has been there for a long time, that was one of the places we drew from. I, I hear what you're saying, I wonder if uh an additional thought might be to really articulate it in the note section, whether or not it, it was a different line, perhaps, but at least your, what you're looking for in terms of justification should be more robust than the note section.
I, and and I would, I mean, I would say, and for some of these things, I would say like integrated studies, like maybe go back and ask your win people, like, how do you pay for the science project that you do? And then, because there's a whole middle school that's doing win, I'm sure some, that they need funding, so where's the right place for that to go? Because they're probably spending more than five hun- you probably need more than five hundred for that, so it, where, when teachers need to get reimbursed, you know, because they've, I think they built like super balls in a science win, or they like made smoothies in a, whatever. So I just wanted to, to reflect what we're really doing, I'm not saying that you're mishandling the money, I'm saying that the budget isn't isn't accurate as to where the money should, should, should be, if we need it. I don't know, I can't think of the line off the top of my head, but you know, there's a.
Yeah, but I think it would form like a supply.
Yeah, like, like EMHS supplies.
Like, it would be used as consumables to do science or whatever.
And then, yes, or, or goes into each, each department gets money for win, because they all do, they all do, they all do a win, right, every, like, like.
That, it's.
Yes, not all have, uh, not all require supplies, but yes.
Right, but, but it's safe to say they might, you know, that they might do a project or an experiment or some sort of something, so.
And and they do it right, we would, we'd like to be able to do that.
Yeah. And I would just be happier, I, I mean, this is just me, but like, bring that to zero and put, put that money where it, where it belongs, so that when we're doing our budget each year, we know we're not, it's not integrated studies.
Yeah.
Maybe start a new line that says win, middle school win, or middle school supplies, or, I don't know.
No, I think that's great, and I, I don't think that we would remove the money, just um, let's find a different spot within the budget that we could put it.
Yeah.
And that is, you're not in agreement, the justification should also be more.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. I, that's, that's helpful, that's helpful, because then we don't have to have this conversation, because.
Yes.
Right, the more notes.
The more notes we say, you know, so.
The educated we become.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and so, and again, in like the STEAM teacher position and the STEAM equipment, maybe the wording to that particular thing we could change, maybe we move it.
Yeah.
Uh, or maybe we leave it and see where it goes and grows as it's just new, um, change. Um, so the next one. Sticking to this pattern, I think I kind of flipped it, but uh instructional programs, so the assembly programs. There was some questions about the forty five hundred dollars that was in it last year, wasn't spent. Um, and the feedback to that, that it was underutilized due to some scheduling conflicts, however, this is something that they really wish to promote this year, they really hope to get between this year and next year assemblies back up and running, bring more things into the schools. Um, and actually use this line more, but it just, last year wasn't able to happen due to some scheduling conflicts, but we don't want to cut it, because if we cut it, then we take away those opportunities for assemblies to continue.
Yeah.
Um, so this is something we wish to keep in hopes to be able to bring more assemblies into the schools that we talked about before, even like, how can we do more assemblies for the students? And bring students together to talk about whatever might be suicide prevention, or what to look at your students, your peers, or other things, so how do we bring those together? So to cut this line wouldn't be able to allow us to continue to create these opportunities for students to come together, um, so.
I think the only, the only comment I have about that is that if we don't spend it again this year, we really, if we have a couple of years where we're not using it, we owe it to our public to not be, keep funding it if we're not using it, it's just, you know, and I don't want them, I mean, we were, we were, we had quite a surplus this year. And it's, it's a thousand dollars here, it's a thousand dollars there, it's a thousand dollars, and it adds up, so I would say when we come back to that, that we look at, you know, usually you provide us a couple of years, that's, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Um.
I think it is like a push in the schools to create more opportunities for assemblies, I think that they did kind of go to the wayside for a little bit, and I think that I
Yeah, yeah.
know, we talked to, I think it was like two meetings ago, we're talking about how to, yeah, like, how can we bring assemblies back?
Yeah. Yeah.
Like, all the kids come together and they're just sitting together talking about a situation that's happening with all the students, like, how do you deal with your emotions, how do you deal, so. It's a good opportunity, and I think by keeping that, it allows the staff to be able to reach out to different people to come in and present on those subjects.
It also has a lot of, for flexibility, and I mean, I put Dave on the spot, but there have been times when we've chatted um, an author, for instance, might be a little more expensive than what's in the line item in the library media specialist, but that certainly falls under assemblies, and so we're able to supplement that there. Then we do, last year or two years ago, two years ago, so. But again, to, your point's well taken, and that's something that really we want to kind of get back, back to, have been some regularity.
Yeah. Yeah.
Two years ago, we combined our assembly, or three years ago, our assembly lines at the two schools, and we had um the chaos and kindness guys actually did, like that, so that way, and that one was, you know, so we tried to like, kind of, but we gotta get back in the cycle.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, I support assemblies, I'm not, I'm, I'm very pro, pro assembly.
But not just having money.
But like, I just don't want, if we, that's what I went through to look at, if we're not spending it, why are we keep refunding it?
I'm a tax payer too, with that one.
Yeah, yeah.
I think now, like, you know, Josh and his team have gone and done all the bleacher updates, and so now we have great bleachers as students, you know, they're not broken and stuff, so
Yeah.
let's bring assemblies back together, you know, and bring them back into the common area, so.
Yeah.
And the chaos and kindness one was great, that was amazing to watch the kids come together that way, so there's opportunities, so we'd like to leave it to create those opportunities.
Yeah, it's awesome. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And that's.
You got some homework to do. Spend the money. You got some homework to do, spend the money.
Maxway Performance is in the athletics, I don't know why it's up above athletics, but that's okay.
I haven't really ever, we haven't really gotten, I don't, I've not received clear communication on like what that is.
I'll take it.
Yeah.
So Maxway Performance is a um a contracted service that works with a certified strength and conditioning coach who provides um workouts, planning and teaching for all of our uh athletics coaches. So that any of the off season and preseason and in season conditioning, strength training and all of those pieces are, they develop programs that are sports specific, provide some training to the coaches, one obviously wanna be sort of doing it the right way, making sure kids are safe, and you know, our our coaches are phenomenal. Not all of us are strength and conditioning, um you know, that's that's not in everybody's thing, and the uh the requirements change and and the practices change, and so um that's essentially in a nutshell what that contracted service is go afterwards. Are there any certifications or anything that they help the coaches achieve when it comes to this, or is it just a a train the trainer, if you will, of type of environment? Uh at this time, and I can double check, there's not a it's it's neither a train the trainer or a certification, it's really developing the program, so the the coaches do go through training to implement the programs that are developed by Maxway. Um but I think there's some liability when, you know, if I I train Jen to be the the trainer, there's some schooling that has to go with any of those certifications, I'm not as well versed in that, obviously. In the strength and conditioning world is I should be, but there, right now, there isn't, and I'm not sure there is a pathway to have coaches achieve certification in strength and conditioning.
So this is the cost for the program itself, or some, this is the program, is that what I'm just doing?
It's the contract for the person to write the programs for all, uh and train the coaches to make sure they're following the programs that are written that are sports specific.
Well, so would you?
That person certified, it's not, it's not a bunch of waste.
We get someone from Maxway who comes into our building in person and trains all of our high school coaches.
Yes.
And and do all of our high school teams use like strength, they can, like, do they use the weight room and stuff like, I'm just adding that.
That, sometimes it's the weight room, sometimes it's outdoor training, sometimes it's bodyweight training, sometimes plyability, uh but yes.
And so how often do you think we're getting this, it's essentially consultation, correct?
Hundred percent.
Okay, so how? And again, I'm just asking, I'm not saying it's not important, but but i- in the in the world of budgets, like, how important is it? Um and maybe it's in incredibly important, because we don't wanna put students at risk, but what are we getting for that, like, we're getting somebody once a month, we're getting once a week, like, what uh what does it look like? Do you, like, do you have a relation, like, do you know who this person is, is it a different person?
I do, I don't, I didn't know him before, I was here.
Yeah.
Um um but it's um it's Brendan Ramsey, um that's the company.
Okay.
Uh and so the consultation can vary, you know, how often, um but really, the the whole service is kind of predicated on I'll I'll teach, right, I'll show you the the most cutting edge ways to keep our athletes and peak physical condition to, it's less about winning and more about not to say an injury, whatnot. I'm sorry, I lost the the second part of the question, Julie.
Um I would, I would, you know, I was just, I'm just kind of trying to conceptualize like what we're getting, like, this person's coming in, how often are they coming in to work with our, like, cause they, we have our fall teams, we have our winter teams, we have our spring teams, y- you know, is this, does this, do we maximize this during football season, if so, should we be adding that to our football budget?
It's equitable across sports, because it's important that it happens there, and and there's more service provided uh in the summer as well, which is when a lot of it happens. The other thing that I just thought of while you were talking is it might also be worthwhile to check from a liability perspective. Um what the requirements are, because I'm just thinking, like, I don't wanna open a can of worms for our coaches to conduct workouts, they have to have some level of knowledge, and so I I just wanna double check, but I'm fairly certain that this also satisfies some liability concerns, but we're instructing uh weight training and and but but don't go by that, I'd rather go look, cause I think that's an important thing to ask.
That's that's helpful, thank you, that's helpful, clarification.
Uh we have a coach here, could I ask Josh, his experience is.
Come to the pop-up?
I'm just playing my tongue out back, so I'm pretty good, it's not good.
I always hesitate, I wanna just put someone on the spot.
No, so as a coach.
Josh Byron, still his director and championship baseball coach.
Yes, uh I didn't utilize this, excuse me, but as much as I should should have. Uh what this program does, what um uh what he does, he's he creates specialized programs for each sport, so it's not it's not just like, okay, this is what every team does in the offseason, this is what every team does in the, like, during the season. It's and it's it's week by week, um he specializes workouts for like game day workouts, or what you should do post-game, pre-game workouts, stuff like that. Um and kinda like offseason workouts are a little more, you know, strenuous and harder, and then as you get in season, they're they're more like
Maintenance.
Maintenance, maintenance pieces, flexibility, um to reduce injuries and stuff like that is mostly what the in-season stuff is.
Recovery.
Right. So it's not just, he will, he will come in, he will demonstrate workouts uh in the program that that we're given, there are those training videos too, so basically, coaches are just there to supervise the workout, they're not, you know, they're just there.
They're not designing the workouts, right?
Correct, so that's where I think some of the liability piece comes in, this is, it's put on by a professional, this is their training, it's just like if you do like a Peloton workout, like Peloton's not liable that you get, if you get hurt, you're just doing their workout that they're suggesting for for you.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Yeah. That's helpful, thank you, appreciate that, yeah.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you, anybody else wanna, you know?
Uh I could talk to the bleachers a little bit more if you wanted to.
I don't.
And then we talked about this, but we, the the bleachers in the budget, uh Chris and I had talked multiple times.
I don't think I complained about that.
No, but it fits. Was a piece of.
Yeah.
There was not a group of seats in the gym.
Okay, yes, okay.
So he, we had spoken that he really couldn't hold assemblies for the safety of the kids, so we you know, he, that's why that line wasn't spent in last.
That makes sense, that's helpful, thank you, yes.
Any more questions on that?
I have my notes here, Josh. Thank you. Uh and and I think Christine said Maxway should be under the athletics.
Yeah, that's fine, no, it's fine, yeah.
Probably stuck it up there, but that's okay.
The uniform replacement one, do you want, I'm sorry, I just jumped in.
No, I was just gonna ask if there was any more questions on that. Um but no, Chris, if you wanna keep going with the athletics, you are more than welcome.
Um it was, it was funny, I I got the, there was a question on the uniform replacement line for middle school where the number was zero. Uh and then exact, the answer is exactly what I think people are wishing for. We don't foresee a need to, in the replacement cycle, and I'll remind folks, we have a replacement cycle for things like uniforms and equipment and whatnot. Um we are able to skip a year because our middle school uniforms have been well maintained. The cataloging system is far superior to what it was, we're getting them back now, there's a component of that that uh you know, walking and graduation is contingent upon making sure your obligations are all met, so that uh now falls into that, which has been really helpful, and and Chris and Brittany have done a really good job of depending on the administrative side, so we don't foresee a need, and as the guidance was before, if we don't need it, don't put it in, and so it may shift a year from now, uh and similarly, the same logic applies to at the high school level. Um there is that replacement equipment cycle and there is a need there, um I don't, I don't have in front of me which team when and whatnot, but they are equitable uh you know, across boys' girl's sports, you know, uh those pieces and uh anticipating the additional um sport offerings that we talked about, I don't believe there's a uniform for um e uh esports. I'm not positive on that, but there are for things like golf and fishing even, so there's, you know, minimal, I don't know, they're not uh.
Well, the the thing, I think I was asking about the uniform replacement middle, because we had talked a couple of years ago about like, there was a rotation. And if you do one sport a year, and you do like, you know, just middle school, girls soccer, boys soccer, unified soccer. Um volleyball.
You're talking high school, middle or?
No, I'm just talking about middle, so just.
So no unified for middle?
There's no, okay.
It's cross uh falls cross-country, boys soccer, girls soccer, in the fall.
Okay. So that's, what that's three, there's only three falls, three spot fall, um.
I believe so, yeah.
So, cause I don't know how often you replace uniforms, like, once every five years?
It depends, like I said, I don't have it.
Yeah, I'm just, I was just in my head thinking like, you know, girls soccer, boys soccer, um you said track, track? Cross-country. So, okay, yeah, yeah, so I just wanna make sure that we're we're actually, like, we have a system, we we talked about having a system, so that every year because we wanna, we wanna look good, like, we wanna, so we wanna.
It's exactly what's happening.
Yeah, so that was, I was asking when I was here, cause and I think, did we just buy, I think we just bought, I saw it on the manifest, baseball uniforms?
Yes.
So then next year, what are we, what what comes after boys baseball?
I would say, I don't have the, and what I, what I could do, and what I think might actually be helpful. Um and I was gonna propose this anyway, because uh the meeting on the nineteenth would be our next meeting. That really sh- uh I was gonna ask to have the athletic, this the fall season update?
Yeah.
And why don't I ask that during that update, we just have a quick review of where we are with the replacement cycle for uniforms?
Yeah, I may maybe just a, maybe just like a spreadsheet of like twenty-five, twenty-six, where we're placing this, I would I would love to see a plan for the next five years.
And so that is how we operate?
That would, I mean, I would just love to, because we see the manifest, so we saw baseball, um so that's our, that's our one season, so this year in high school, we're replacing baseball, cause that's a, five thousand is about if I'm not mistaken, is about one sport.
It's tough to say, they're not apples and apples, um so for instance, I referenced cross-country.
Yeah.
That's usually a pair of shorts and a shirt, whereas, you know, uh baseball would potentially be pants, a shirt, hats, socks.
Right, yeah.
Um softball is just the shirt.
Right.
Uh and usually they buy their own pants and they don't have hats, right, so it it's not apples to apples.
Sure.
But it can be clearly articulated, and there are times when, uh and that's, I think, responsible to say, hey, we can get another year out of this. But this, we really need to shift.
Yeah.
Without changing the lines, but we could make adjustments in the cycle if if need dictates that.
Yeah, I mean, it would, I think it would be great for people to say like, oh, in two years, you know, um varsity soccer is both both, maybe it's boys and girls, but like people can, your coaches can see that like, we gotta make these uniforms last because we're gonna update them in two years or three years, or we just updated them, we gotta wait another five years for the cycle, so anyway, that that was really my
It does exist.
That was really, yeah, I would, I would, it would be great to see that, and when it says like, uniform replacement, maybe it says soccer or football or whatever.
Whatever's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, the line, the the descriptions are helpful, but, yeah.
That's how, that's, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Uh do you want me to keep going, Christine?
Yeah, you might as well just keep going through, because it's gonna be questions, so.
Um the replacement equipment pieces, I actually, when this got sent back, I said, well, I I would have questions too if I were sitting in these seats. I never once have I heard anybody question, we get it, but what is it?
What is it?
So, for instance, and and that's where I, Chris and I really sat down and said, so if I got really specific in the new and replacement equipment cycles for for what's gonna come out of this next budget, uh you know, the the yard markers and the the down markers for football, the corner flags, goals, goalposts, not goalpost for football, but the goals and nets for soccer now, they're on a similar cycle. Um and and again, I've said it a few times, in all areas, we put some ketchup in terms of getting this school in a place where the schools, and again, a lot of credit to Christine and the current district level ministry to get on a replacement cycle. And I think I referenced it before, when we talked about the cooking labs and the stations, that didn't exist before, so we're working our way out of it, and we're now, in the four years I've been together with this team, we're now like firmly in a structure, which feels good, it wasn't like, it was a lot of ketchup for a couple of years. Uh so, do you want me to go more specific?
That's, I mean.
And then there's other, so this one I actually thought of on the way home last night. Last year, and I'm not getting into the political piece of it, but the price of, does anyone know where baseballs are made, I know it's in our past, but the baseballs we buy are made in general. So the cost tripled between last year and this year, and what hamstrings you as a municipality is we're really only supposed to budget for the coming year. So if we knew baseballs were gonna increase, we could have bought way more than we needed.
Right.
But we wouldn't be following the rules.
Right.
Similar conversation that we had with hats a few years ago, right, so, so we could be wise. Or we can comply with the rules.
Right.
Uh but sometimes the rules don't allow us to be wise, and so I thought that baseball example was a really good one, because you think the price for baseball tripled because of tariffs.
Yeah.
Um and nobody saw that coming, and so you find that out in June, you've already made your budget, it 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 could create problems.
Um I I get, just to keep saying the same thing I keep saying, but it's really helpful, again, for us to be sitting here, to be looking at closely, and it says middle school equipment replacement, not just us, but I do think our community wants to know, okay, like, what are you replacing? Like, are we gonna replace the scoreboard, or are we getting new soccer nets, or are we getting soccer balls, or what whatever it is? Um.
It's covered enough.
Yeah, is is so that, so that we can say, this budget i- is is providing these things, and they can see what these, you know, new replacement, new equipment, replace equipment, that's in the budget a lot, in a lot of departments, and of course, we do trust people, but we also, again, had a very large surplus, so we have to ask ourselves, is that something we needed? And so we have to, I think we have to be more critical to say, instead of saying just moving the money, to say like this year, we're going to buy, that we're gonna replace this athletic equipment, or this band equipment, or whatever it is, so that's just where the line, the lines you know, sure, we need all these things, um let's hope we don't need scoreboard maintenance every year, either that or we need a new scoreboard, you know, I'm just like, I'm just using as an example, we have a couple of scoreboards.
That's actually, those are two really good examples, I would say the one on the soccer football playing surface, it's that's coming down the pipe, we're already pricing it out.
Yeah.
Um and so, I'll go back to the baritone sax, you you find these, and and again, it's a great question. If we find we've gotten to a place where we're exhausting repair lines, then we have to think, okay, is it time to stop throwing good money after bad? We're we're facing out some of these pieces, um but again, I think eh what you, what you're asking for, not only is it valid, but it should be reflected sort of, I think, it can be reflected differently in those notes.
Yeah.
I almost wonder if or not that we'd get this granular with it, but the same process that you offer with relation to the uniforms, you know, we should have some of that strategic thought for some reason. With the caveat that we also need some flexibility for things that pop up that are unexpected emergencies.
Hundred percent, right, a hundred percent, but again, I think for some of us who have uh kids who have participated in a lot of athletics, and there are always costs associated, but when we see things like a new gate or a new scoreboard, you're like, oh, my tax dollars are replacing this, cause there, you know, there are people that are out on the athletic fields, fall, spring, and then they're in the gym, they wanna see the new bleacher seats, they wanna see the new goalposts that we got for soc- you know, for football, they wanna see a new scoreboard on the baseball diamond, cause you can't see it, um but, you know, so they wanna see that there, all this money that we're asking from them. They wanna see, see what where it's going to, so.
I think the examples that you just gave shows that we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah. I think I'm good on that. Um I mean, this, so this one is still a little vague, but I'm, I mean, I'm not gonna, it says middle school equipment replacement, it just says regular replacement schedule, it's ten thousand dollars, again, what what are we replacing, what are we planning to replace, that's more than baseballs, you know, that's more than soccer balls, like, is there, is there a plan, you don't have to answer that now, I'm just saying, as a board member, what's ten thousand dollars going to replace in athletics, how in middle school, middle school athletics?
So I, again, you said I don't have to answer, but I think, I think you deserve one. Um and really, it's an explanation, more so than than one answer, right? So talk about, for instance, and I think we did the volleyball nets a year ago. Um you know, there's, there's two separate sort of programs, right, and one of the things that's confusing, and I, I already have a a big question for for Christine later about, I think some of what creates this confusion is the fact that our budgets are broken up into two different schools, and we're not two different schools anymore, so I think naturally, I almost wonder if having that discussion down the road and the legality of making one line and and combining those pieces, I wonder if that's another place we would look at to find some efficiencies or inefficiencies.
Fortunately.
I know there's a lot of reasons why we can't.
Through state reporting, um you have to report middle school and high school separate expenses, um it's part of our state reporting, we're considered three schools. It's part of our state reporting, we're considered three schools, we're considered through state lenses. And elementary, middle and high school. And even though we merge as one, eh, there's a lot that goes behind changing that structure. So for, um, DOE twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-four, all of the reports are required to do funding through the state adequacy grants. Everything, we have to have a breakout of how many students are in middle school, how many, how much goes to middle school, how much goes to high school, so.
You both have kids that have been in middle and high school, your parents bear messages, right? You get two? Because I cannot, we're unable to because of the way our kids are reported. We have to send two, so every time I, we send messages to grandparents, we do it twice. Because that's how the state asks us to do it. We've even asked to be considerable in school, uh, many times in the last two years, three of them. We get three different answers, but it's always no, three different reasons, but the answer is no.
And I get that like, if you replace the knock, the soccer nets. That's gonna benefit middle school athletics and high school athletics, girls and boys. And so I'm just, I, I guess. So you, right, right, so then there's more, so there's several nets, but there's also in the, we, we all share our resources. You know what I mean? If we, if we, so, so I get that, I get that, I, I guess I would say like. I'm just asking, you know, ten thousand dollars, ten thousand two hundred and ten dollars, it's a very unique number. What's the thought on, like, is it soccer nets? Is it, I don't know?
Yes, um, and then again, on a smaller scale, obviously, you know, we don't double charge for things like goalposts, right? But some of those, um, the supplies, also, the, some of the supplies in athletics are also used during PE classes, right? So, so the wear and tear of some of those items. Weight room equipment has been, that's a place that really needs some focus, uh, we've talked about that for a few years. There's some other pieces too where, um, you know, and, and there are some other lines where it didn't get spent. Sometimes if we don't, uh, and, and we've gotta be a little bit more nimble at the beginning of the year. If we haven't encumbered some of these funds that we budgeted for by February and, and we're starting to feel the stretch of revenue versus expenses. We freeze the budget and even though we, and it's frustrating to be here as a principal, right? But also a taxpayer and say, well, so we budgeted for these things, eh, but then you're playing that shell game in February where everyone, Christine more than anybody probably gets stressed out. The budget freezes, and then I find out, we're giving back eight hundred thousand dollars, it's like, ah, but I really could have done. This and this, but it was a risk and, and it wasn't a risk that we were willing to take, so that part's, that's really tough. Always a challenge trying to balance things the closer we get to the end of the year. Logic and the rules don't always sit at the same date. Very true.
One thing, and you'll see that again to Chris's point, um, if we move on out of athletics onto the next page, um. And you go to the media center, there was some furniture that was looking to be replaced in the media center at the middle high school. It wasn't spent, but it's back in the budget, so one of the questions for is back in the budget, if it wasn't spent last year, and this is one of those areas, right? Like we budgeted for furniture, and then we come into February, April, and me being me, I'm like, alright, if you haven't spent it by now. You must not have needed it, like, if you needed it, you should have bought it by now, it should have already been part of your process. And so I'm trying to really like get teachers and everyone in the same mind frame that. Yeah, I know that we, you know, have those split that we go from September to December, and then we start another semester to move on through. But by February, March, April, you should have spent your money, there, other than some consumables that might come up. Supplies, obviously, um, the food ser- the food program and things like, there's always stuff that comes up then. Graduation expenses and things like that, like, I'm not gonna be like, don't spend these things, obviously you're gonna have to because we move forward, but. If you plan to purchase, like a furniture purchase, I'm gonna buy it in September, don't wait, because it looks bad, right? It looks really bad if you're coming into April, May, and you're buying a piece of furniture. It looks like you're buying it for the next year, right? Because you didn't utilize it in your fiscal year. In which you were accompanying, encumbering that money, now you're buying an expense that's for the next year, so. It's, it's tough, it's tough for people to really wrap their heads around how that looks in the whole thing of it, but.
And I'm gonna sort of defend that you being used, because it's the function of your job, every, every district that then had like, the, that person. Has to make sure that the lights stay on, right? And I'll go back to the media furniture one too, and that was one that was, was frustrating because we worked really hard together. Knowing that the, um, that that space was gonna be torn apart, that was purposeful to wait as long as we could. Because I didn't want to move brand new furniture out and then back in, so Josh and Christine and I tried to work together to make sure. We could order it. But also not move it twice, and that didn't, the common sense was superseded by the rules. Uh, and so that, again, those things are set, sources of frustration for me, but those are the rules of the game, it's not because Christine. You know, didn't give us the keys to the vault, it's, you just can't do it that way. And even the furniture, well, you know, Christine's rationale is so valid, when you're buying furniture, it looks like you're using it for next year, and you wanna look and say, well, duh. We're gonna use this furniture for a lot of years. So, but, but those are the rules that govern what she has to do as well, so it's, it's tough.
It was a fine balancing act between the need and the want, right? You know, when, when the money's not spent and you can go another year and give it back, then you have to question, was there really a need? Or is it a want item? And we, we have to push that little, we have to push the envelope a little bit, right, to get to that point where. The need is almost critical. But we're still in the want phase, right? Cause once you get to the need, you're kind of pressured, you have to hop on something, you don't get to do, your due diligence. And really go that extra mile to make sure that dollar's well spent. And I know that's a fine balancing act on the budget side, as we're all looking at every penny of how to save dollars.
Yeah, and it's the need and want, it's a good point, Matt, and it's also the, um, the environment that you create for the teachers and for kids, right? Do I wanna, do I want the chairs, uh, I'm just looking at those two chairs and that desk. Do you buy it when it's about to break, or do you buy it after it breaks? And, and I don't want my kids going to school with broken stuff. So do we need it now? No, but I might need it tomorrow because that leg is bent, and so, I know it's a silly example, but that's exactly what we go through. And Christine's really good about guiding us through it. We spent a lot of time between the two schools, even looking at. Moving more into replacement equipment than into new, um, so you'll even look through our whole, all of our proposals, we really said. I- in that vein, Matt, is it a need or a want? And I think a want is more reflected in replace, a need is more reflected in replacement than a want might be.
So, um, the media center furniture, um, I don't know where the seven thousand dollars came from, but that was the notes that we had. It was to look at the seven thousand, but when looking at the numbers actually in the budget, if you looked at that line, there was four thousand dollars that's budgeted this year. Um, for furniture to be replaced in here, um, I'm going to assume that that is going to be spent this year to do so. So that number is zero next year, but because they are replacing the furniture, um, for four thousand dollars this year. So, they reduce that line, um, because they don't have a need for it next year. Then jumping down from there, the accreditation.
Can I just go back to the bookmobile?
Just moving on to the furniture, so, because of the budget free stuff and things like that.
To piggyback on, uh, Matt's, um, want versus need, um, it's a nice feature, it's eighty-two hundred dollars. Your note, somebody's note says program continues, usage and interest will be evaluated over summer. We're supposed to be spending it this summer, so we should not, July first is our new budget, so if we don't have a plan. Like, very soon that we're gonna spend it, it really should come out. We didn't use it last year, I think it's a want, I love it, it's cute, it's nice, but we have a beautiful library that we just renovated. And we're, you know, we had a lot of people speak on behalf of the support in the library. We're gonna add a bookmobile, but we're gonna remove, uh, you know, the support that we're providing, it seems, doesn't, doesn't line up for me, but. So I'm pretty, I'm a pretty, um, I'm a pretty hard, uh, hard no on that, even though it says keep. Unless somebody's saying, yep, I'm gonna do it, I'm, I'm doing it this summer.
I think the conversations that's happened is that Dave and Susan are really looking at bringing it back in, and then if there's. If they are not going to do it, then teachers seem to really wanna keep it, um, so gauging that teacher interest of. The teachers that might be interested in continuing, moving it forward, um, so those conversations are happening now for this summer. But without knowing who is going to really jump on board, we don't wanna take it out. Because if there is a teacher or the libraries that come forward and say, hey, yeah, let's do this, let's keep this moving, and we cut it for. Our twelve months from now, in the crystal ball, are we gonna be. Cutting our foot to save our face, when at this summer it takes off, because now we've regained that interest again.
I just, I just don't, I think it's, I just, it's nice that teachers might want to do it. I don't think this district needs to do, and I feel terrible saying it, but we are being asked by our budget committee to make cuts. I don't think we need to spend eighty-two hundred dollars on it, even if we have people that want to do it.
Could I make a, just a, I don't know if it's a recommend, I don't know if I even can do that, but, we, we had, uh. Some compelling arguments that, that we were gonna talk about in our budget cycles. This almost feels like they're not mutually exclusive from the other part of the conversation. When, and when that conversation is scheduled about the position that folks advocated before before and this piece. Might it make sense to have that discussion at the same time?
Yeah, I mean, we moved out at that spot, but that all entwines in tonight's topic, right? Like, so here we are. Having these discussions, and so that can be part of your thought process, like Chris was saying, like, if you're like, fine, as a board. We are deciding we wanna keep the media specialist, not saying that's what you're gonna do, I'm just saying you could. However, in keeping that, we want to reduce this position, that is a conversation guys can have, if you said. No, let's keep the mobile, but we're gonna get rid of the media specialist, you could do that, like, that is entwined together that you could have this conversation. So we're just gonna run through the sheet, and it's, I'm gonna just turn it over to you guys.
Sounds good.
Those are all conversations that you guys have to have and decide as to what you want us to do. To put forward the best budget back to the budget committee for discussion next week. So note that bookmobile, that's the conversation that's happening, right? Like, they wanna bring it back, they wanna continue it, it was good. It fell apart last summer, um, we didn't have the interest, but it wasn't due to the community not loving the bookmobile. People love it, they, the kids love it, they love when the books, you know, when the, they would come around in the summer, I'd see them outside the SAU, sitting under the tree, reading books. But when I would go outside with them, like, there was a lot of engagement with it, I think it's a great program, I think it really took off during COVID mostly. When people didn't have, you know, a whole lot of outside things to do, um, and then we got back into our. We're back in the schools, or that, so then it kind of fell apart, but the community liked it, how can we keep it growing, how can we move? There's thoughts to do so. But that's kind of where that conversation's gone. From there is the accreditation that Niasq, so I, I'm gonna. Because we have the knowledge in the room, I'm just gonna turn this back over to someone who can speak to this way better than I could.
So the accreditation piece, I think, we've talked about what, what that means, um, every other year. Next year and, and last year, you'd have more of your visiting teams, the costs associated with that also involve our Niasq membership. As a school and, and the cost to keep it, uh, or dues, I guess we're calling it, I think we probably could take a look at that. We could take a look at that number, uh, if, if I can have some time, which I know is not on our side. But Stephanie will be back on Monday and really cost out, um, the year in between the decennial visit and the collaborative conference visit. There's a potential for the year in between, which would be this current year, there would be less next year, that cost will go back up. So we could potentially look and see, is there a place to shave? Cause next year we'll be hosting the people coming. So really, this would have been the year to look at, at, at reducing, but I could go back and look and see, is there any way there to hold that? It's not just the visit and the dues, there's also, you know, that, let's say they make recommendations, I'll, I'll just, I'll sort of make one up. Let's say a Niasq recommendation was to put window treatments on all the windows, right? Again, we don't, we're not obligated to check all their boxes, but there are some pieces there. And we've positioned ourselves pretty well to do that, some of the beautification, for instance, uh, things that you might not think of. Our hallways never had any direction as to what classrooms were this way and that way. Those would be things that, in accreditation, would say, hey, it's really hard to find your way around, and unfortunately. Even, uh, see that conference room sign behind Christine, we costed out what it would be to read number and rewrite everything, and it was. It would, you would not believe the cost because there's braille on there, you can't just make them scot list or looked into how to make them with our, our own materials. And the cost was, so, it's like people know that schools call the order certain things, and the price goes up just because they're school, because I think.
I think that the Niasq, I feel like, um, and Christine would probably know better, that like, we didn't. Cause I remember we had twenty, I remember asking, like, we had twenty-five thousand budgeted, it must have been last year, but we didn't spend it all. You know, we didn't need it all, so that's sort of where it was coming from, was that we didn't, we budgeted twenty-five thousand, we didn't use it all. So like, do we need another twenty-five thousand, especially if we're not hosting, all, you know, cause the, the, the answer when, when I asked was, you know. We have to put all these people up in hotels and meals and things like that, but that's like a couple of days, um, you know, they're not here for two weeks, you know? Yeah, sure, and the, I mean, there's costs and meals and things like that, I get that.
I could go back and.
If you could say like, what did, what did we pay last year for Niasq, you know, if it's twelve thousand, well, okay. Plus it's five thousand for our accreditation, you know, can we, I know these are pennies, but there are pennies, there are, are, are.
If, if, if Christine and I could just have, I think we could do it pretty quickly, that's an area that I could take a more critical look at for sure. I, I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm gonna cut it half.
Well, thank you for, I appreciate you looking into, you getting some information on all those things that I was asking about.
The last one that's on your thing, um, actually I did remove three thousand dollars in the budget, so you will see that on the total reduced. List on your very front page that you have, um, we did remove the pusher. As you know, um, we purchased our new loader back. I'm sure you saw it, but as. Spence came in, I shipped the invoice to the town, so it'll be coming back in on the revenue side. Um, it is not here yet, but, uh, we would have loved to have had it for the last storm.
Christine earlier this week and asked the same question, like, did we, did it deliver our range?
I signed on it, I think Tuesday before Thanksgiving, they came to the office and I signed all the paperwork, and so then they had to order it. And I'm sure we're not the only people in the world looking for a, maybe we are, back a loader this year.
This might be the winter quarter too, based on the star.
So this storm, the facilities crew, uh, we can't speak enough for the level of care that they did. For the parking lot on this one, um, they were in here at midnight, the night of the storm. Until the very next day, clearing with the trucks that we have, the town is down a couple vehicles. So they weren't able to clear the town roads as quickly as possible, as you know, we had a two hour delay, but that wasn't due to our parking lots. Our parking lots were perfect, they were cleared, they were pushed. They got comments that they look better than they have whenever they've been cleared.
Even from the most persnickety of folks, it was, it was, people went out of their way to compliment, what a great job they created.
So they, they really did a good job with the limited equipment that we had.
The new asphalt helps a lot too, I'm sure, to make it easier for the plows and, yeah, just to be able to move it.
On minimal amounts of ice, it's a disaster until it's parked. So the first couple of days, we had some surprises, and again, the guys in their facilities proved great, but the new asphalt, it's like a new windshield. It's, it's actually better when it's a little pitted, it was, there was a couple of days. Before the sun hit it, it'll melt and refreeze real quick, but they've been awesome.
It, it really looked great, um, so, but to that conversation, we do not need to purchase an additional pusher. Because the back a loader that we are ordering already has the twelve foot pusher in that pricing. So we did go ahead and move the three thousand dollars for it, um, the other thing that was in there was the salt box to build a larger salt box. But I know at our last budget discussion, we talked about maybe using the impact bees or something to create a larger structure. Maybe a garage or however that might look for future, so at this time, while we start to have those conversations. It made sense to not have it in next year's budget, however, I didn't wanna take away. It made sense to not have it in next year's budget, however, I didn't wanna take away the two thousand dollars. Um so I did keep a thousand dollars in the snow removal because there might be things that we need. For snow removal, I don't know exactly, I wish I could sit here and say this is, but this is new to us, right? This is new territory, we haven't done our own snow removal before, the town always did it. So could we be coming into next year and having some unknown expenses that we weren't thinking about? I'd rather have a thousand dollars there in case we need it for our snow removal, whether we have to go pick up salt, I don't know what that looks like.
We've even had a recent experience here, I think Mark was the principal. We have to remove snow from the roof because we get an unbearable winter, so that's, that's always on the table.
Yeah, it could be that, you know, an ice buildup happened and the gutter gets knocked down, I don't know, so I. I wanted to keep a little bit there.
That was, that was brutal. And I appreciate Christine, you, because before you, we didn't plan for things like that, as a parent, my kids were home for two weeks because of poor planning. So thank you.
Um and then the, so I kept that one and then I took another thousand dollars and moved it. Into the vehicle line for fuel, because when we purchase such equipment as a backhoes loader, it's gonna have diesel expenses. So we're gonna have to pay for more gas, I don't know what that's going to be, I. I never filled up a loader, I guess it depends how many storms we have, um we have an amazing warranty plan. It's really impressive, actually, when I read through the whole thing. Um for this particular loader, but it doesn't obviously cover the cost of our fuel. So uh I wanted to put a thousand dollars into that fuel line to help with those offsets. So I did reduce that line by three thousand dollars, but I kept the two thousand and kind of moved, just shifted, so. Um back to your first page. And then I'm gonna let you guys take it from here, when we look at the buzz, budget reductions, I wanna bring you back to the original conversation. That the budget committee had said to us, they would like us to cut two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars from our budget. So this would bring us to about the four point five percent area of what our default budget was originally at a four point five percent. Basically, the two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars would bring us to that four point five percent of the default was at. Areas that we looked at, one was the uh media specialist decision, so I'm sure you guys can have some conversation around that. So that was fifty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. It was spoken to from the budget committee that they would like us to not reduce positions, however. This wasn't necessarily reducing a position, this was a position that the person was retiring and through national nutrition, you look at. How you can use these positions and outsource and look at ways that we can. Still give the services to the students, but start looking at our budget and making sure we're um utilizing those correctly. The next area was the loader for a hundred and forty thousand dollars, obviously, we took that out because we're able to use the impact bees. Primax insurance versus our property, workers' comp and unemployment, um they always come in with their rates around mid-October. Where we've been very fortunate that ours didn't go up, ours actually reduced by quite a bit, so our property insurance. Were down by forty-five hundred dollars, our workers' comp went down by thirty-seven hundred dollars and our unemployment went down by twenty-three hundred dollars. So we're to go effing, you're doing a really good job and making sure we keep our areas safe, um and that we're not having to utilize our insurance a whole lot. The next area was our insurance adjustments, again, those rates come in in October. We again, I think it's done a great job that um the overall increase for health insurance this year. Was about twenty to twenty-five percent increase throughout. Um school care has seen significant increase, I'm sure you've heard about it in the news and other places. That they did have the risk pool that ended up occurring for school care that unfortunate, fortunately, it didn't happen for health trust. But a lot of schools were faced with a point at the end of their budget cycle where they, we had a surplus. We probably would have been in this position where they had to go back and say, are we gonna fund the risk pool from our current budget? Or are we gonna use our surplus that we're giving back to the town to fund this risk pool? With that, obviously, school cares rates were through the roof, so. Um we're fortunate, but I was on a call, yes, it's a snow day, it was snowed Tuesday. Um with cross insurance, talking to them about risk pools and different insurance plans and. Talking about um options out there and they were pretty impressed with the fact that. We have a drop for a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars to our insurance. Because our biggest plan, which is our Blue Cross plan, which is just our deductible, it has no. Um deductible, it's just a copay that you pay, dropped by one percent. So although one percent doesn't seem huge in the big scheme of the budget, because it's such a high cost plan. We see a really big savings there. Um the other plan went up by eight percent and then the other plan dropped by two percent. So with that, there was still a significant savings there of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, so. We're very excited about that, I think it's great, um where some people may go, okay, it's good, my insurance looks expensive. There are some districts out there that are really getting hit with this cost this year. Um and then the last part is the loader pusher for three thousand dollars, making the total reduce three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So they came in at a target of two eighty-eight, we are at three eighty-three. However, there were three additional increases, we had an increase to our annuity lines. That with some of the administration's um contracts this year, it includes an annuity. So we had to increase that line there. The town um water came in at a three percent increase, so you'll see that for twenty-one hundred. And then S S T is starting a new electrical program. Um and with that, it's gonna come some increased town, it costs to the different areas. So we're estimating at about a sixteen thousand, five hundred dollar increase. With that, the total reduction to the budget is three hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents. What does that mean overall? We're sitting at a four point six-six percent. Over increase over the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And a three point seven one percent in our default budget. So we were at a four point five, we're now at a three point seven, we were at a six point one and we're now at a four point six-six. So if you're comparing your default budget to the operating budget, there's a difference in the two of about. Two hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Um so not a big change from your default to your actual voted budget. That's my spiel and I'm going to toss it back to you for questions, thoughts, decisions.
So, excuse me, so I have one that I, I'd like to bring up as a consideration, especially since. We had folks come in and talk about uh retaining the position. There are three lines in the budget that talk about sub, subpay. And they are well underfunded, uh even with the bring, the bring up this year, they're still drastically separate from our actuals. I still contend that I don't think that that is right for us to put forward in, in our budget, we know we're going to spend more than what we're budgeting for. We should be putting him as close to our actuals as possible. I might fully rec- recognize that there's gonna be some fluctuation year over year and it's not ever gonna be exact. But for us to bring that up to be what our actuals were this past year. Uh we'd have to add fifty-six thousand dollars into the budget to account for that, which obviously cuts down on. What's being saved right now, I haven't run the math just yet, but it put us at about two hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Somewhat dollars instead, still more than what the budget committee has asked us to reduce by. But I think it is putting us in a better position of we're actually representing where we're spending our money, instead of leaving that as a, as a disparity. So, um I'd, I'd ask everybody to consider that as well, um and your thoughts on that. But I think that plays into what impact I may have for the discussion around um maintaining this position. Cause it's roughly the same amount of money.
Follow-up question, it seems, and looks like the elementary school had the biggest impact for that. I know we talked briefly about it, but do, is that repeating, is that gonna possibly repeat this year? Of how much they were over budget for, for substitutes?
As of right now, they are already over expensed, so I predict that it's going to repeat. I don't know the exact, you know, as the year goes on, I don't know what could happen, but as of right now, I would say. Um the high school is about half of their budget right now, but elementary is already currently over expensed. Bring up a good point. And again, when we added money to those particular lines, I knew it wasn't the actuals and I, I. One that usually says we should represent actuals, but to take a budget that was already so tight. Make that large of a jumper where for, since I've been in this district, this, these numbers have been what they have been and there's never been a movement in here. That I was like, alright, let's make some movement, let's start somewhere.
So it's a bit of an unpredictable line, right? Somebody has a major life change, you can't predict that, you gotta cover it.
Yeah, no, and like I said, I, I don't think we'll ever be able to hit it dead on, but I think, I think what we owe to the public is. Our best faith estimate of, of where we think we're gonna be and into, to still be underfunding them by. Thirty, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars apiece, you know, I, I think we recognize that. We are not gonna have a, a such a beneficial swing in, in that expense line that we're, we're gonna come in that low.
Try their best.
Absolutely, and I, I don't think it's anyone abusing the system, I don't think it's anything wrong with the system that we have, but. Based on how we, how we offer things for our teachers for enrichment and just the, the structure of. Their contracts and their employment terms, that's, that's just how things work out when they're going to be out for sick leave. Or for trainings or anything like that, we have to bring somebody in to, to fill that spot and there's a cost to that.
Staying on that topic, cause I agree with you. Um cause I have down, we're under budgeting, if you will, sixty-eight thousand for the substitutes for the elementary middle and high combined. But then there's one line that looks like some additional clarification on, it's the custodial summer subs. Where we put in there.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, we haven't used much, budgeted five, but we're looking at proposed ten.
Um last year we used more, so you don't have, the, the actuals you're seeing is the twenty-four, twenty-five, but twenty-five, twenty-six. Is what we spent, so the reason for that is, is that twenty-four, twenty-five was the first year that we started using. Um summer help really, so we hired some, the twenty-four, twenty-five year, we hired three students, I believe, to begin with. To come in and provide those summer help and then it was good. Like, I really enjoyed the students coming, the students enjoyed it to like, see what, what it is you do to turnover a school in the summer and how that all comes together. So it was a great opportunity, so we wanted to continue with that. Um with that, also, we always looked into the custodial line, just um. Really overtime for custodial help, we never looked at sub position. This year, um is the first year that we started advertising for a sub, so we actually have a custodian that is retiring out. But he is interested in coming in and working as a sub, because as you know, our department is one of those departments that always has turnover. There's, as you're like, whoa, we finally staff, next day you're not. Um so how can we fill those? So we want to create an opportunity to have a year-round substitute. As well as continue the summer substitute um program that we already started. So twenty-four, twenty-five's actuals might not reflect that whole thing, cause that was kind of the first kickoff. But this year really showed me how much we would do to continue this and so that's where, between the new sub. During the day program and then to continue the summer is what I would think that we'd be looking at.
How much have we spent this year so far?
If you wanna keep having discussions amongst yourselves, I will get that number for you in just a second.
Other, other budget topics, well, Christine's looking that up, um that people wanna discuss? Do people have thoughts about the library media specialist position? Based on tonight's.
Uh I'd, I'd actually like to hear a little bit more from, from maybe Matt, and Chris, were you on the committee for that as well or no?
Yeah.
So I, I think it'd be beneficial if you can share some more from, of how some of the discussions took place during that committee that, that led to this. I think maybe that would be a little bit more helpful to me, uh as I'm having heard the, the public outcry for it and, and. Obviously, the initial proposal to um stop carrying the position, I'd like to hear some more of the justification.
Yeah.
The line, uh we budgeted five thousand for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, this year, we spent ten thousand, fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. So that is where my ten thousand dollar number came from, to align better with what we are actually doing to maintain that summer help. And I will turn it back to you.
I'm gonna ask a follow-up to that based on my last one.
Go ahead.
Need or a want on that line? I know it's good with the kids in the summer.
I think it's a need, uh the summer is one of the facilities, I mean, we're busy all year long in that department. But in the summer, there's a lot that happens in these buildings that flip them over, we have our maintenance staff that's really concentrating on painting, repairing. Different things, um doing the carpets, doing whatever might be needed in other areas. And then we have the custodians themselves who are coming in, they're refinishing the floors, they're doing all the high-touch areas. They're doing things during the school year, you just can't get in and do. Um so we also, when you do a classroom, it's not just come in and clean, you're flipping a whole classroom out, right? You're moving all that furniture, all the bookshelves, everything out of a classroom in order to come in, clean the floor. So our students have been so great at coming in and doing that, they'll come in and they'll, they'll help get the furniture out of the room into the hallways. And do all that stuff while the custodians are really refinishing those floors, so it's been great, it's, it's. As much as it might be a need or a want, it's been great for the community, for the students. And it's been really helpful to the maintenance staff to have the students be part of this. Um and then we actually had last year, one of the students become an employee after their summertime. That they were like, wow, this is really cool, I wanna be part of the school. Um he ended up moving on to another one, but it was those opportunities too for the students to be like, and I think it gives a sense of respect. To, to the departments and. But they are used, there is, it's not like they're just coming in, they, they are being utilized. Uh a very highly throughout um for different projects that we are having during the summer and especially this summer, the summer. As you know, over E M H S, we had huge projects going on, such deep cleaning that had to happen in the classrooms. Due to the tiles coming down, the insulation coming down and the students were in there, they were helping clean those classrooms, scrub those classrooms, flip them around. Um and, and then we had them over here focusing on E E S while the rest of the crew was over there doing things, so. It's something we wish to continue.
And you said, there's, there's someone who's gonna be retiring, who's interested in, in taking this up, so. Uh not a student, but a professional custodian, uh would they potentially be eligible to be the, like, weekend coverage? When we've got groups in here and they need to have a custodian on hand rather than having someone from regular rotation?
Yeah, I think it's gonna provide some of that coverage too, that it could, you know, this particular person, is this the exact person for it? I don't know, um he's still like deciding his own family needs and if this is going to work out best, but no matter what, if he doesn't take it. I wanna continue to advertise for it, I'd like to have someone that could be that type of position, like it's up for subs. Um to come in for events, but also, you know, when you're a custodian, you come across a lot of sicknesses, right? You're, you're cleaning the areas and you're touching things that students are touching all the time, so you're after to get sick. So we have a lot of subs that call out and then it pulls onto the maintenance staff, we have our maintenance staff that comes in at five o'clock in the morning. And they're acting as custodians for the first part of their day, because we don't have enough coverage. So to be able to say, hey, substitute, could you come in and cover for this sub, for this custodian that's out this week for vacation? Um would really benefit the department and not pull on our staff so much to have our maintenance crew and stuff coming inside covering. For this, I think there's a room to have a substitute and I think that having this new line would, an increase in this line would help us do.
Moving on, thank you. Um so, high level in terms of looking at that position, so. The discussion that took place was, this was part of that discussion, obviously, there was a much broader discussion of when we were trying to achieve the targets. That the budget committee outlined in terms of a reduction in our overall budget and really strive to get a savings of that two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Uh we heard the budget committee loud and clear is trying to avoid cutting personnel, is really was that primary focus that we were trying to avoid. Opportunity on this one was, we're not eliminating a position, right? We weren't gonna backfill a position. That was a discussion that came up in the budget as well, is we have open wrecks, open jobs. And do we look at not filling some of those jobs? Uh which obviously could be a detriment to services. Uh, which obviously could be a detriment to services and students as well. So we, we're trying to look at every angle to say, do you take an open position that's budgeted and can we avoid filling it? That was kind of that first step to it. Second one is, okay, you have a position that ultimately be a replacement. That gets factored now into that mix. So the objective was to achieve, hopefully overachieve, the ask of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Not knowing a lot of the other factors that are now present at this time. Um, of course, the loader being a primary one and of the insurance adjustment, uh, is a substantial one as well. So that, that's where it originated from, um. And of course, a lot more discussion around it. It wasn't one that was taken lightly to say, hey, we're not gonna, you know.
The coats are on, we're all shivering.
For those that didn't see that. I wouldn't do that to you, Josh.
It's sixty-nine degrees.
It's not sixty-nine degrees.
That's what every teacher says all the time.
Well, he's also wearing shorts, so all year long.
About the past if you're cold, sorry.
So, so, no, no problem. Um, I jumped in on that too. Uh, so when we looked at it, that's really all the factors that went into the funnel, if you will, to say, okay, where can we do it? And then, of course, looking at the six hundred lines that we've all been digesting over time and saying, where can we do the shavings? Make a pile to try to obtain that two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Uh, so that's where we ended as a possible path and then presented it, of course. Um, Chris, I don't know if you have anything to add, trying to summarize.
But I think that I love the shavings to make the pile. I've not heard that one before.
But you will use, I know, I hadn't heard that either, but I bet it'll, I bet you'll recycle that.
I, I do, I, there were some really great points made tonight, both through the advocacy and whatnot. And the decisions aren't arrived at lately. We wanna make sure we're not impacting kids. Um, but I, I think it's also important to note that we have done a really good job at sort of building structures that increase morale. And, and we are starting to see that tide turn of not only recruiting and retaining high-quality staff. But, um, we're also making decisions, um, uh, we're helping people make decisions that are best for them. Maybe there isn't a fit. So not all turnover is, um, due to culture climate issues. I think in the past, that was probably true. But there's also a delicate balance of, we, we try to, and I think, you know, there's always room for improvement. What we heard, you know, there was some conversation at the beginning of the process, but you have to be really careful in terms of culture and climate. Cuz it's a thing, if we brought an entire team of paraprofessionals in and said, we're looking at eliminating a position, then that can really create. Uh, a lot of unnecessary, um, turmoil for lack of a better term. So that was another thing I think we really tried to think about. We wanted to make sure we were including people and being as open and honest and transparent about where we were headed. Without causing a lot of maybe unnecessary stressing and concern. So, um, I just, I, well, I thought that was an important point to make. And, and I think that we, you know, approach things with sensitivity and not, none of it, none of the decisions ever came around. Performance or things like that. It was really what we're asked to do in every line of the budget, you know. Are, are we presenting something as fiscal responsible? And so that's what we tried to do.
Thank you. So I, I guess my only, my only other couple of thoughts around this, uh, right now without hearing it, any other discussion about it is. With the, if we, if we were to bring up the, the sublines to match where they were and everything, like you said, that puts us at around two hundred and ninety-nine. That gives us eleven thousand dollars roughly that maybe we could put back towards this position. So we're still looking at having to, to find another forty-five, forty-four thousand dollars. If, if they, if were to have the same benefits, et cetera, et cetera. But for, for argument's sake, anyway, there's forty-four thousand dollars that we still have to find. And then I think the only thing that I could really speak to on any of the, the discussion that was brought forth by members of the public. I think the, the only part that I can disagree with a little bit is justification is. This isn't, this isn't somebody's being terminated or we're doing a reduction in force. So while I understand that the person who's in that role now does have a lot of institutional knowledge. This wasn't, this wasn't a lack of foresight on, from a managerial standpoint or anything like that. We're not, we're cutting, we're not trying to cut a nose off a spider face and lose that institutional knowledge without having an opportunity to pass it on to somebody. They, they have chosen to finish their career. And so that institutional knowledge was going to leave with them no matter what. And so we're, even if we bring somebody in, it's still gonna be training and, and them having to get used to. The kids at the elementary school, the kids at the middle high school, getting used to all the systems presumably, depending on what they're familiar with and what they're not. So while I appreciate some of the, the, the cultural aspects of, of that. I don't think that, that part is necessarily tied to whether or not this position should stay on.
Do you wanna jump in? Because you know what? I was looking at her. I'm not, I don't wanna push on the spot, but you know, I always have something to say.
No, go, go ahead, cuz I'm still, you know.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think, I, I appreciate, appreciated the, um. School staff coming and sharing their point of view. And honestly, I learned a lot more about the position tonight. Um, and I, it will directly impact kids. Um, I feel by, by which, you know, is not what I want. Um, and I think that, you know, we think about, you know, a person sitting behind the desk. But I think they explained really well that it's so much more than that. And by having somebody in this, in this space allows. Um, Dave or I can't remember her, Suz- Suzanne, Suzanne to be able to either go visit her classroom. Or to, uh, to do some of the, the more in-depth work. Um, you know, I'm sure if Dave is out sick, I'm assuming the library's closed, if there's nobody to work in it. Um, so.
Which is what happens now.
You have, yeah, unless, unless it's a day when the staff person is there. So I think about that impact we have. Librarians do so much. I think they're, um, they go, um, like, under-recognized. They, I know they help a lot of, at least in, because I work in a school, he's always working with classrooms or teachers are bringing classes down. He's not just, he's, our librarian's not, he's not re-shelving books and checking books in and out. That's just a piece of it. There's so much education that goes along with it, making recommendations for books and things like that. So I don't know, it was a really, I did not realize it was a shared position. Um, so I think it's really impacting K to twelve. Um, and it's, again, it's fifty-five thousand dollars. If you take out the bookmobile, there's, you know, there's eighty-two hundred. I'd rather, I think, I could probably guess they'd rather have the person than the bookmobile if they had to choose. Um. You know, we've talked about a couple of other things, like a little bit of Niask money line. We've talked about, um. I don't know if there was another line we were gonna look at, I think. Um, I don't know. Uh, I, you know, I would, I hear what you're saying, Ben, and I, I don't disagree. That I think that our lines should be, that's basically what I was saying when we were talking about integrated studies. That you're saying the same thing, like the, our lines should be accurate. So if, if we don't have an integrated studies program, it should be zero, but then that money should go, if we need it for, for win, then let's put it somewhere. That we can say this is for win projects. So if we need that money for subs, it should be there. Um, again, the budget committee said two eighty-eight, the, we're, we're, we've met that and, and then some. Um. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna make a rash decision, but I, I, you know, I, I, I could be in support of. Um, the, keeping the library and media aid position. Um, again, that was, that was brought to us and I, I don't wanna discount the committee either because I know there was a committee and we, 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 we had representatives. Um, so I don't wanna discount that process. It's an important process. But also, you know, they were a board of five, so I, I don't know. I. I feel like it's gonna impact a lot of kids, um, not having that person. And it's gonna be hard to, there, there's no, who else are we gonna pull? So one of our librarians is out. Who's gonna run the library that day? Nobody. So we're already trying to stab.
Specialists now cover the library?
Nope.
The aide, I mean, I'm sorry. Does the aide cover the, what are the libraries?
But these are, are, these are all good points. There's one piece I'd like to circle back on. Um, and it's about the, you know, service to students piece.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think in a vacuum, knowing that we have the person dedicated to that, sort of walking out the door, right? There are avenues to provide the service that can be explored outside of a position. And I'm, I'm, this is not me saying one way or the other.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that's not, uh, you know, perhaps that is worth a look.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I, I, I certainly understood, you know, there are parts that you can't expect students to do. But really leveraging what we have in terms of ELOs, what we would have in terms of the community service requirement that we still, I think, are only scratching the surface on. We've seen an uptick in, in like volunteers daily, even at the middle high school now. Um, and a combination of appropriate teacher duties, you know. Those are all pieces that if it's done well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're really looking at, like I said, A-days at the middle high school. Um, I, I can't speak to what it would look like structurally here. I, I believe that Suzanne's a part of the new A-rotation. I'm not positive on that. So those principles, I have to speak more, um, to, to that daily piece. But I'm not, I'm not ready yet to say we can't provide services to kids. Until I've had more time to see what opportunities exist. I know time's not on our side.
So I guess I can ask a follow-up question based on, cuz you brought up a couple of good points. But I guess I'm curious and I, I wish either, um, Mr. Seuss or Ms. Murphy were here tonight so they could chime in on this. But given that this was the recommend- recommendation that came from that committee, uh, and we've had, we've had it for a little while now. What, given some of the proposals that you, or thoughts that you've just shared with us. Wh- what of those are, or is it something else that you and perhaps the elementary school leadership have looked at? For augmenting the, the media specialist or the, the librarians, be, if this role isn't filled? Cuz that's certainly a distinct possibility that came from the recommendation. So what, what plan, what, what ideas have you guys? And if you can't speak for the elementary school, I completely understand. If you want, just give me the middle high school perspective, totally understand. But given, given the, the idea that this was a, a recommendation that would be acted on. And it would impact next year, what, what things have you already looked at, um, putting in place that will satisfy. Serv- servicing our current students?
So in broad strokes, what I just shared is sort of, that's, that's been, those have been the options we've discussed.
Okay.
But not in any more grander level than I, than I just.
Okay.
Well, I think too, our librarians probably can't conceptualize that. We're taking, we're saying, this isn't gonna exist, but we can't really provide them with like. However, this is what, this is how we are gonna meet the, those needs, the, the job description. So it's a library media specialist, there's a job description and we're gonna assign these three tasks to potential community, you know. Community service and ELO. So I'm sure there's some nervousness about what it's gonna look like for them next year.
And I think it would be a mistake to do it that way because that would be top-down. Our library media specialist would have to be an integral part of those discussions. I don't think we'd be in a place to say, this is how you're gonna fix this problem. We'd say, this is how we're gonna backfill the need together because they know it, they live it. They're gonna be able to give us. Sort of more in terms of, no, Chris, that, that, that it's not gonna work as perfectly as you think it is from, from my world. So we need the boots-on-the-ground perspective to really solve the, to, to cover it correctly.
I, so I'm gonna kinda go in two different places, but I'm gonna relate them.
Bless you.
Thank you. The, the issue with this sub. Line being over in the budget and the need for substitutes. And then this, this other position that's currently a paraprofessional position. I wonder, I don't know, I don't know how, how many subs on a daily basis do we have between the two schools? Does it make sense to explore the possibility of one or two permanent subs? That could fill in more than just the capacity of a classroom teacher? Would that position be something that could also support the media center? Like if you had a, like, you had a, a permanent sub and that person shows up and that's an employee, they show up every day. And I don't know what that contract or pay scale would look like. But does that, does that help kind of address two separate issues maybe? Is it worth exploring?
We currently have. One, and each one. And the role when there isn't class to cut, really that it's predicated on the ISS.
Okay.
And so could that shift? Yes. We, it's like solving one problem to.
Yeah.
Or fixing one problem and, and creating another.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's an idea that can work. I would love to say, you know, dedicate more time to research and reading than to remediate behaviors. Right now, it's not our reality.
Right. Yeah.
Both are important.
Sure, of course.
How's it? I'm kinda stuck on the, I'm kinda, I mean, in my mind, these are kinda two separate things. I am gonna agree with Ben that we probably need to increase the sub-line. Maybe we don't have to. Maybe it doesn't go all the way. I don't know. I don't know what, I don't know what makes sense for the number, but I do think that we're talking. I've said it, so I should, you know, practice what you preach, basically. If, our lines should be accurate. So I do think for our sub-line, we do have to make it accurate. Um.
So we threw quick numbers.
Yeah.
As we're talking, you know, probably looks like I'm sitting over here on my phone, but I'm really working my calculator, figuring out the numbers where we're at, so. I can use this one way quicker, like I like side calculators. I wish this keyboard had one because I can work it quicker. Anyway. Um, so if we were to increase the sub-line. Um, keep the position. Remove the bookmobile. Um, we'd be looking at about two hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred with those movements. Um, that would be increasing the sub-line by fifty-six thousand, keeping the position at the fifty-six hundred. Which is about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Um, and then removing the bookmobile, which brings us down to the hundred and three, three hundred. So that, just for your mind's sake, as you work through, that's about where these decisions would be.
Just say two fifty-two, Christine.
Two fifty-two, five, five, nine. Yes.
And we were asked for, I'm just.
And we were asked for two eighty-eight.
So we're, we're at a difference of, um, twenty-six.
So I mean, whether it's.
And you're gonna find, you're gonna find some pennies in Niask.
There might be some pennies here and there that maybe we could get to like the two sixty. But with the, you know, I, I wouldn't predict us with the pennies that we could find going much more than the two sixty mark. So you're still coming under target. Again, it's a target that's we're given. And if we can come close to that grade, we can, okay, but we always like to. Um, that's what you're looking at.
Could I ask a question? Would the compensation package be different? And would it help us achieve the goal of at least backfilling some of the duties if it were not a full-time position? And the reason I ask that is potentially a, a retiree who wants to work, who's an educator, whatnot. If we can work it up between the two buildings, does that change that number enough?
If you had two part-time, then it's gonna change it by the sixteen thousand, I guess, for the health benefits. Because the two part-time people can't be eligible for health insurance. What does that look like? Are you going to be able to backfill those positions? How hard is it to get a parent to work part-time?
But if we did that, at least we're making a ask and. But if we did that, at least we're making an ask, and essentially, if you look at that position from the building levels, it's two-part-time position. Anyway, I know it's not in the current structure, but now it gets us a little closer to the number. And potentially, the person who works here every other day, if the position is filled every other day as it currently is. But it's with two people bringing the total compensation package.
Or, or one person and you, we split it two days here and two days there, period. I, I guess part of it too is that, you know, we, we have a lot of, like, we have a lot of things in our budget, um, and. You know, this is fifty-five thousand, so that's twenty-seven thousand per building, you know, that's not a lot of money. If, if fifty-five thousand is a lot of money, but then when you look at it, it's, it's a district-wide, so then it's really twenty-seven for EES and twenty-seven for EMHS, so. I don't know, um, I mean, it was. I, I certainly, I, I understand why we're here, because of the natural attrition of the position. I think it was, it's a really good, um. It's something, it's really important to explore that, does it, does it make sense? You know, I think we, we are obligated to, um.
I think also the other part to that is that committee that was brought together to say, let's look at the budget as a whole and start, you know, we never wanna. Look at positions as people, right? Like we're looking at an overall budget and saying, what makes sense moving forward? How can we move forward as a district? What does this look like in the future? We have to start making cuts somewhere in order to sustain a budget, yeah. You're looking at fifty-five thousand dollars in whole, in totality. But moving forward, that fifty-five thousand becomes sixty-five thousand, that sixty-five thousand becomes eighty-five thousand, you know, depending on. The contracts and how those move, so moving forward as a district, we can always sit here and say. We wanna save this position, we wanna save this, this, we need this, we need this. But how can we get smarter about how we're moving our staff and utilizing our staff and stop looking at it, which is the point to this committee? How can we start looking at this and saying, where can we save? Like, although we don't always want to cut positions, this wasn't, this wasn't a chance to cut a position, this was a chance to now.
Right.
Let's step back, let's shave, let's reshape it, let's move forward and say, how are we using our staff the best? What does this look like for our community in the future? And so, just. Food for thought as we move through these thinking too, you know, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's always like, oh, don't do it, it's gonna impact this, or don't do that, but then we're never gonna get to a spot ever in our district. Because no matter what we look at, there's always going to have to be eventually to stop growing our budget. You're going to have to cut a position eventually, it's going to have to happen. And that position is going to hurt the community, because people love what we have, right? You don't wanna let go, it's what you have, but. You can't keep sustaining the tax rates and that's what our public has asked us to do, this is what they have asked us to do. And so that was the point to this committee, so I don't wanna take away the work that the community has done and said, well. Let's keep it because this is the more fuzzy thing to do, I just, just food for thought, just throwing that up.
I, I'll, I'd just like to, so, but I, I know you wanna.
No.
Share something as well.
Feel free.
I, I would like to make a proposal, um, and whether it's before or after you share your thoughts. On, given the, the latest information, I would like to propose that maybe we break out into a brief non-public session for a discussion. Um, as it, as it relates to this, cause we can't, we can't have an in-depth discussion about this in public. But I think perhaps a ten or fifteen-minute non-public and come back here and resume the meeting. Might be beneficial to help get to a, a resolution on this.
I support that.
Okay, so. Do you, do you wanna share any thoughts before?
No, I, 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 um.
Okay, then I would, I would like to make a motion for us to, uh, uh, pause the meeting for a few moments. Enter into non-public under RSA ninety-one, A three, section C. For ten or fifteen minutes to have a discussion and then come back and immediately resume the public meeting.
A second then, that has to be seconds.
Yeah, we, we'd have to.
Okay, thank you, Jacoby, I, Knight, I.
Love it, I.
Willie, I.
All right.
Time is eight thirty-eight.
Okay, so hopefully we can either get into the main office or, or the conference room.
Josh, Rob.
Wherever you guys wanna. Okay.